I'm going to call this meeting of the town council work session for the ninth of June to order. We begin with planning commission decisions. These are in your packet for the June 3 meeting. There was one application that was approved. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Well, and I know that this information is in the class A report and not in the planning commission decisions, but it says in the class A report that originally the project was all workforce housing and then it changed. What was, why? What was the reasoning? Why did it change?
You want to answer it Eric or you want me to?
Do I want to answer? No, I thought Truckee was going to answer it since that's his. I have opinions about it, but I want to hear.
Oh, I have opinions too.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yeah, the original proposal came in and it was the medical office building and seven free market residential units. But then staff did our research on it before it went to a hearing with the planning commission. We, you know, found the plat note that basically said, basically only allows commercial along with workforce housing. Was a one piece residential that was allowed. So we approached the applicant about that and went through the first hearing and said it's something we're going to have to address before we proceed any further with it. We then became actively involved in some discussions with Tom Bagley, the applicant project in terms of if you're going to, you know, if you're going to provide any housing, you have to have workforce housing. And basically it came down to negotiation like, listen, I'd be willing to provide workforce housing if I can also provide some market rate units. Otherwise I probably just want to residential on this project. So basically that's where we ended up getting to a tentative agreement on this 50/50 where half of the units would be deed restricted. Deed restricted workforce units, the others are market rate units. So that's as proposed right now, and there's a couple of changes included in the conditions that would change that plat note. And then also would clarify it on the master plan, which now talks about it as being for commercial uses only. So that's a real brief history on that. We got there kind of on a partly negotiated platform in terms of working with Mr. Bagley was something that he could potentially make work. He had to go back and work with his partner several times. But we always in those discussions with him, made him aware that the planning commission or the council could still have issues with that, that that was staff's first attempt at coming up with something that might work for both parties. So obviously this is your opportunity if the council desires to weigh in on that.
So we, and I appreciate staff's work, work on this, but we do, we can change it back if we wanted to, right? Is that what you're saying?
We can call it up Eric. We can call it up this evening if you'd like.
Okay. And if we call it up, we can change it back, the plat note back.
Correct.
Was, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mark did, does the applicant have the ability if he doesn't do residential to make the commercial larger?
Yes, he's got density for that Eric. He absolutely could make the commercial larger.
To the same, same footprint? So it could be potentially more office space, I assume?
Yeah, it could potentially, yes.
We should, without going into a lot of detail, we did discuss this briefly with the housing committee this afternoon and maybe Dick or Gary.
I'm happy to share that discussion and, you know, I went into that meeting really, really struggling with this and I'm, I'm still kind of struggling with it. But, um, you know, Mark explained the history of it and the history of the plat and everything else. The plat is for three, three lots. It's for the Alpine Sports Lot that's already developed. It's for the, the develop, developable lot in question and then one other. So, you know, if we were to say yes to this, it's only affecting one additional developable lot going forward. That, that was a meaningful factor to me. You know, we, we put the, the, the math, you know, this, this application was in before we changed, you know, our, our workforce housing requirements, but we, we did the math with our current code of, of, you know, workforce housing, workforce, you know, generation in commercial projects and, and it, and it passed. So the seven affordable housing, workforce housing units made it work. And the other factor that maybe swayed me, you know, this, there is a, a community benefit that, that we're getting a, a up to date medical facility here in town, you know, and this is a huge upgrade to high country healthcare. So, um, you know, we could call it up and deny the project. I mean, that's our only option if we call it up. Calling it up isn't going to allow us to negotiate. It's, it's, yeah, we call it up, then we have a hearing. And if we deny it, it goes back to the table and.
However, we, we could call it up and in the week or the two weeks between now and the call up, staff could negotiate based on some of the comments that we're making now. So.
Yeah, he could. And we weighed that and, you know, and Tom very well may negotiate something away, you know, so like, like, maybe restrict the seven market units to no short-term rentals or to maybe put a 100% AMI rent restriction on the five units that don't have a rent restriction, you know? You know, those would be a couple of things that, that I would have loved to have seen, but I guess I'm not willing to risk the seven units that could just go away. You know, we're spending 75 ish thousand dollars in housing helps as well as in buy downs to get employee housing units deed restricted. So, you know, this could be, you know, half million bucks in employee housing. We're getting two units that are 80% AMI restricted and then five units that have our, our deed restriction light. We call it same deed restriction we're doing on housing helps. So I guess that was the discussion that kind of swayed me at this point, but I'm interested in hearing what others have to say. Gary, Mark, did I mess anything up or miss something?
Yeah, go ahead Gary.
No, I'm sorry that I, Dick, I had you doing the heavy ordering here. I was on and then got kicked off. Time I got back on again, the conversation was, was all well on its way. No, from what I heard Dick say, I mean, I mean, we went back and forth. We had a long conversation, Dick and I and Mark about, you know, calling it up and, you know, what, what might we get out of it and what might we lose? And I think, I think at the end of the day, when we said, you know, let's take a look at it on what the, the current housing guidelines would require of a project. That helped me a lot get over, get over the hurdle of potentially calling it up. And also Mark pointed something out in our discussions. Now, this is going to be a medical office building. And when we consider our other medical office buildings around town, I think this will be a significant improvement. So I almost define it as a, as an essential or business, an essential business. And I know for instance, when we look at things like city market, how important that is to the community, we say, look, you know, there's things that we can be very flexible there because it's a very important, you know, piece of real estate and blah, blah, blah. And I kind of, you know, I'm looking at that as well and saying, and this medical office building, I think it'd be very important to the community. And the fact that it could meet our current housing standards, if you will. And I think if we want to play hardball, we could play some hardball, but there's potentially the developer has the right to go ahead and just do, just do some commercial without any residential component. So I think those conversations, I, I began to back off a little bit on the notion of would I, you know, would I be the one to say, call it up or would Dick be the one to call it up and we would, we would second each other? So, you know, that's where we came out in terms of, you know, where we are right now. But obviously if somebody wants to call it up, we'll probably have an opportunity to call it up and talk some more about it.
So what is the, what's the motivation between having two units at 80% AMI and then the rest five, you know, kind of deed restricted light? And what exactly is deed restricted light, Mark Truckee?
The motivation is they needed five points. That's the motivation.
So that's why they did the two, two at 80%?
Otherwise it doesn't pass. So they went from 14 deed restricted units down to seven and then got five positive points for overly deed restricting two of them and putting our deed restricted light on the other five.
I mean, wouldn't there, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of wiggle room here that we could just, you know, without, without putting a kibosh on the deal and also maintaining the fact that it will pencil for the developer. They just to ask for a little bit more as far as the five with the, the five with the 80, up to 80% AMI opposed to just the deed restricted light. I mean, I don't know what you guys think about it, but it just seems that that would be, that would be the natural ask for me. Make them all 80%, seven and 80%.
What's the difference in size between the 14 units? Are they all identical or are the seven non-restricted larger?
They're all fairly close in square footage, Eric. The, it ends up being about 140 square feet more for the market units total than for the deed restricted ones. And that's out of like around 7,000 square feet total. So it's a pretty small difference. Obviously little design elements make account for some of that.
Do you think the developer would have any, any problem with putting a short-term rental ban on the whole project? You know, one, one of the issues potentially is having seven full-time residents and seven units that change occupants every couple of days, which depending how it's laid out can be, you know, we've, we've, we hear from people that live in some of the older units in town about, you know, I live here year-round and the people bang up and down the stairs and they're upstairs in their ski boots and, and that kind of thing. And then the only other thing I'll say, and then we can, I guess, you know, anybody else can ask questions is it's only a medical office building as long as it's a medical office building. That there is nothing that guarantees this thing stays a medical office building for longer than whoever the owner is decides that's what they will rented for. This could easily become regular offices or something else with a change after this thing is built. So I don't want to hang too much on, on that aspect, Gary. So.
Yeah. Eric, in response to your question, yeah, the, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to repeat it again.
Is there any chance that the developer would go for an STR ban on all 14 units?
Yeah. He, what Tom Bagley has told us is from the start is his intention was to have short-term rentals on those seven units. And that's really at least what he's telling us in his pro forma, he needs that to work. Obviously there's a little less value to them if he can't short-term them. He could certainly still be, you know, selling those or renting those out on a long-term basis. But the short-term is, you know, increases the value of that. So, so far what he's told us is that's a very important part of the proposal for him.
Okay, fair enough. Any other questions? Yes, Tim?
We're getting kind of close to talking too much about this application before calling it up.
Fair enough. Any other?
I do have a question and you can just tell me it's too much if it is too much, but I was just curious about like ingress and egress and parking. Are all those things, like we're not cutting a break on parking. There's sufficient parking for that commercial space and everything?
No, absolutely Kelly. It's our code. In fact, they're, they have additional parking right now. I mean, the, if the new parking spaces they'll be providing, it will exceed the parking that's required for the first two building pad sites, including this, the second one. However, there's this third building pad site that's going to come in down the road and they're going to have to address parking there. They have some spaces left over, but depending how big that's, that building is, they may have to provide some additional parking beyond what they have today, but that's accounted for. And in terms of the access, the only major change that's been discussed is on Park Avenue right now, there's a right-in, right-out access to that and that would continue to exist. However, there's been discussions that there would also be a left turn coming northbound and Park Avenue into the complex at that point. But you couldn't come out and take a left turn. You'd have to go right out still.
Okay. And then is the, is the, are the services that Centura is planning to provide in that space the same as what they provide over next to city market right now? Or are they going to have like an urgent care or anything like that?
I, I haven't heard the actual business plan for that, so I can't respond to that. At least replace what they have over at the existing city market complex.
Okay, yeah. It just seems like a lot of in and out right there, but hard to imagine all that going on into that little spot.
We will take this up in the night meeting if, you know, everybody think about it, if somebody gets the itch to call this up. We can do that and if not, it'll pass. So that'll be at the 7 o'clock for anybody. Yeah, Dennis?
So either Dick or Gary, one of you said there was only one building is what I heard. And now I'm hearing Mark say there's two and a building, two and a building three.
No, I said there's one left, one developable site left. There, the other site is, it's already developed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. We will move along and go to legislative. We have policy 33R, energy conservation for second reading. Tim?
I think, I think that's Mark.
Okay, Mark. Sorry.
Okay, thank, thank you. So you've obviously seen this before. There's just two changes we made to this since the first reading. And one is to recognize and come up with a point assignment for outdoor hot heated pools and hot tubs. And so we've added that in here with negative points associated with 500 square foot increments. In addition to that, the only thing we've done and kind of apologize for the late notice on this is we did get out to you earlier today. Hopefully you've all seen it, a suggested word changing everywhere where we're talking about the hers or energy rating and it exceeding a certain level, you get positive points. Well, we've added in the Summit Sustainable Building Code and that was a suggestion that was brought to our attention recently. In addition to the International Energy Code, the IIEC, we had that listed right now. But there is a possibility that in the future, the Summit Sustainable Building Code could be amended to be more restrictive than the IIEC. And so to cover our bases, we suggested adding that as well. I also just wanted to recognize Luke Sponable from our office for all the hard work he's done on this to prep, prepare it all. Be glad to answer any questions.
I, I don't really have a question or maybe, maybe I could phrase it as a question. On, on page four in the table, the design feature table, there's water features powered completely by renewable energy source would be a zero point. And I, I just love that. I don't know if there's any interest from others to just say that, look, if you're heating your driveway or you have an outdoor heated pool or a water feature, then it has to be powered by renewable energy source. I'd love to see that. I don't know if anyone else is interested.
What do you think about that, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, that's something we could do. I, I'd have to take a look at it, whether it's something we can pull out for the night meeting or not. But we could certainly take a look at that and if we can, we'll bring it to you. And if not, we could adopt it and amend it down the road if we desire.
Tim, did you have to add some, did you want to?
I was going to ask, is, is the full council wants to see that in the ordinance?
I think it would be a good addition. Yeah, I think it makes sense. Creative.
Yep.
So it would just be for water features? Is that, is that what I understand?
Well, right now it is only for water features, but I was thinking it'd be a great idea to also have it for heated driveway and outdoor heated pool as well.
How about hot tubs? Are you thinking hot tubs too Kelly?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, I don't know why, how we would really draw the line or if there is a natural line to draw there.
My, I mean, I'm, I'm generally in favor of it, but my concern is if they buy offsets from Excel, can, can they change that down the road?
You know, you can.
I think what we could do, we could put in a provision that applies to all those. It just says, you know, if it's an, you know, onsite renewable type of source and we avoid the games of going out and buying energy from somewhere else, because I think that would be pretty complicated to track. Like you mentioned.
So basically solar.
Yeah, solar, more than likely.
I don't, I don't know. I'm.
No either.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not really heavily comfortable just jumping to that, you know? I think I would like to see it have some time to think about it. I don't know what the unintended consequences could be. Could every property be, could do that? I don't know. I'm just.
I'm with you.
Don't know.
Yeah. I'm with you Gary. I would like to hear from, you know, somebody that would be a detractor on that to explain why that would be something that they couldn't actually do maybe. I don't know. I can't think of all the ramifications, through all the ramifications of this. I think on the surface it's a great idea. I'd like to think about it more though.
Can we have some breathing room on it or do we have to decide one way or the other sooner than later?
It sounds like we could just amend it at some point.
Yeah, we could do this tonight, finish the second reading and then come back with it. Give Mark some time to look into it and then we could amend, amend it. Or we could push this off and continue it and, and do it that way also. So you have some time to think about both of those options.
I would also offer to the council that as, you know, as, as we see things from a sustainable viewpoint changing every day, that there could be a number of things you may want to amend a year from now or six months from now. So, you know, I don't, I don't think that it's a big deal to, you know, get this thing passed and then come back and look at this or something else.
You get, you know, really.
I would like to see it pass because I don't want to hang it up on that one thing. So I, I would prefer to move forward with it tonight and then, you know, gather information from the experts so that we could consider.
Kelly, I'd really like to find a way to make offsets even work on something like this. If there was a way to, to guarantee, because in the end, you know, as we've learned, offsets help companies like Excel move away from coal to renewables and they need as many, you know, customers buying offsets as possible. So if we can push, if we can push in that direction, that definitely helps, you know, Excel. We have been partnering with trying to, trying to, you know, work in this direction towards their 80% goal. So I, I'd like to see if there was a way that we could allow offsets for this kind of thing and then figure out a way to make sure that that was honored down the road.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, I do too. Let's get this done tonight and then let's keep exploring because I really like the concept.
Okay, fair enough. Everybody good? Okay. Resolution to adopt a hazard mitigation plan update. This is. Oh, I did skip. Resolution to approve, sorry. And then Leslie popped up and I'm thinking, what does she have to do with hazard stuff? Appropriations to the 2020 budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This resolution would amend our 2020 budget with some supplemental appropriations. But it's largely something that we don't see, which is reductions of the 2020 budget appropriations. We usually do this twice a year, but we've added this resolution in at the request of our bond council in relation to the 2020 COP financing of the broadband and parking structure that we're working on. It adjusts our budget for this related debt payment, which would happen in December of 2020. And also incorporates the reductions to the capital improvement plan, which were previously presented to council.
Questions for Leslie? Everybody good on this? All right. Leslie, thank you.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
Before Leslie goes out, I just want to recognize all the work she's done to help get all the financials together for the COP financing. And Leslie could share with you that we did, they did publish our Moody's rating this afternoon. So Leslie, if you tell them about that.
Yes, so that was a pleasant surprise. We were expecting when Moody's gave us another review after November of last year, they might reduce our rating in relation to COVID and some unknown risk that we might have because we're a resort community and we're so concentrated and relying on tourism. However, we were pleasantly surprised that we actually did not have a rating change, which was a real compliment. They really seemed swayed by our strong reserve levels that we had at the end of 2019. So we maintained A1 issuer rating, which is also called our blanket general obligation rating. And the new debt, the 2020 COP debt rating was a double A2. So that was fantastic news today.
Nice work. Very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations Leslie and the whole team.
Thanks.
I'm glad you got the credit, not Brian.
But I was gonna say, I think Brian is also on the call, so he also definitely deserves some appreciation, you know, especially around the work of the strong reserve levels. You guys should also pat yourselves on.
You know what? I did, I did a little bit of research on this one and I think it's pretty much mostly Leslie.
It was a great team effort with everybody here. So.
Well done, everyone. Yeah. All right. Resolution to adopt hazard mitigation plan update. Chief, is this you?
This is me. Leslie asked me to handle this. Hello, Mayor and Council. This resolution, if you choose to pass it, will adopt the Summit County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation. Longer than the title is the document itself. I assume you all read all 685 pages. The plan is designed to reduce risks to people, property and the environment in Summit County and the impacts of hazards. Also intended to protect facilities and infrastructure and also to minimize economic loss. Document identifies the mitigation action items, reach jurisdiction and tracks progress on their implementation as well. The specific hazards and mitigation actions for the town of Rockenridge were identified across several town departments. Most of the heavy lifting occurring in James, Scott and Mark's areas. This is a scheduled update. It's intended to occur every five years. The entire 700-page document was submitted to FEMA, the Summit County Emergency Manager. FEMA has accepted the document pending adoption by all jurisdictions that are incorporated into the plan. This resolution basically accomplishes that task for the town of Rockenridge. We recommend that you pass it.
Thank you, Jim. Questions? Great reading. Thanks for that. All right. We will get to this, this evening also. Rick?
You got your public projects update in the council packet. So basically you're, you know, there's your asphalt overlay and the fiber 9600 and then also River Park update. If you've driven by, you'll see the progress is being made, especially on that little bike park that's being built there. update. If you've driven by, you'll see the progress is being made, especially on that little bike park that's being built there and at the north end of the River Park. So if you don't have any questions on that, then you also will see under parking and transportation that work has started on the parking structure and it's all fenced off and their first thing they're doing is some relocation of utilities out there. But we have Shannon Smith here and she can address any questions about any of these projects.
All right, guys. Questions? Now's the time.
A quick update on the water plant. When should that be coming online?
Good question. I believe it is still on schedule to be coming online in August. James probably texts me if I got that wrong, but that was the plan in correlation with how it was going to relate to the dam repairs, Gary.
Gary, last time I talked to James, there was some training issues, not having too many people in the room. You know, they were planning on having all our staff, a bunch of people training and a bunch of people also in the same room and with the COVID, it's really changed the training model. But last time I talked to James, things were still on track, so.
I know that would make sense then for August. We thought maybe we might, we might be a little earlier, but understanding that reason.
I think there was some training. Yes. Every, the construction itself, I think, is going, going very well. It's just that the training bit is now more online, so.
Understandable.
Hey, Shannon, why is there a windsock? Why is there a windsock out there? Is it, is like it could be choppers landing?
At the water plant?
Yeah, there's a windsock and I didn't understand if it's, if that's a factor and it's a function of this facility or is there any reason that may be for the crane? I.
My guess is for the crane. That's very astute. That would be my idea as well. And James texted me that we could be operational in late July on the water plant.
There you go. Jeffrey, we are, when we have our open house for this, they're gonna fly us in in a helicopter. That's.
Oh, I think that'll be affordable. I'll take my e-bike because I'm fiscally prudent.
Jeffrey, you can fast rope down.
Nice.
Thanks. I did get a question today and I called Shannon earlier about why the concrete that we're putting in to repair places that we're putting in fiber is smooth rather than exposed aggregate. So there are a lot of parts in town where we have exposed aggregate sidewalk and now there are big patches where it is smooth. And Shannon, the reason is?
About five years ago, I believe, maybe even a bit more, we decided to go to a broom finish concrete instead of exposed aggregate. Because when you do an exposed aggregate finish, you wash off the top layer of the concrete. And here in Breckenridge, that directly washes into the Blue River. So for protection of the river and the waterways, we switched to a broom finish concrete.
So, so if anybody asks you else asks about that, that's, that is the reason. So it does look different. I did not disagree with the gentleman that asked me about it and I will call him tomorrow and chat with him about the, about the reason. So any other questions on other public projects or parking and transportation? No? All right. Housing and childcare?
We're gonna just, I do want a childcare issue we want to address, but we won't do a housing update. We are gonna discuss al de verde later in the work session. So we'll forego housing right now and let Kelly address a proposal in reference to Breck Montessori that came up at the last childcare meeting.
Yeah, I was just gonna update sort of overall because we had a long childcare discussion last time.
There you go, right there.
If, if anyone could help me out with.
Are you giving that child, can you give that child coffee?
I'll try to give her some care. So she, so the childcare centers are open now. They open June 1st with modified service. And that means that most of them are open half day. And that was because of the challenges with naptime and having, having.
I need a cupcake also.
Yeah, give that kid a cupcake.
Okay, well, I could fill in here for a little bit.
Take a stab. Now we see the need for childcare.
Yeah.
I think we need social services going to Kelly. How low do you have the temperature in your house where the children are running around with their winter coats on?
Well, they leave all the doors open. And it's I don't know if you're in Nana, but it's snow here today. Sorry. So anyway, we did, we had to talk about a couple of things that are pretty tough for the centers right now, one of which that's important to know is until the beginning of this week, because of the numbers that they were allowed to have, they were operating at a loss. So so that because of the group size issue and now they've said that childcare facilities can have whatever their capacity number is. So they're no longer held to the same 10 group size that we've all been dealing with. But the challenge is still that actually parents either don't feel comfortable sending their kids back to school because there are just so many mixed messages. I mean, it wasn't safe enough to send and your child who enough to wear a mask back to school, but oh, it's okay to send your, you know, toddler who's sneezing all the time all over everyone back to school. So we do have a fair number of parents who just are choosing not to send their kids back to school. And then additionally, the issue of having elementary age kids out of school has resulted in a lot of parents just deciding that they would, you know, rather have childcare in their home so that they would group their toddler with the elementary school kids and pay one babysitter to come over and watch them both. So all of our centers are operating at a loss right now. And they are not really sure when that's gonna stop. They are allowed to have full capacity now and so maybe as centers are open and, you know, people see that they're functioning and hopefully we won't have an outbreak right away. And people will gain, you know, just a little more comfort in bringing their kids back. And then hopefully we'll be able to actually run the daycare centers at the numbers that can make them sustainable. But one of the, one of our facilities that has probably the toughest kind of nuance this summer is Breck Montessori. And part of the reason that their loss will not be overcome this summer is that they're a pre-K only facility. And so those kids, you know, they were closed March through June 1st. And then they have older siblings, a lot of them who are home for the summer. And, and then they're gonna go to Kinder in the fall. And so there's a lot of those parents have decided, about half their parents have decided there's no reason to bring my kid back for two months. Their facility is also closed in August, so it's truly two months. It would be June and July. They did look at, you know, would it help our families to stay open in August? Would that help us financially? And they ran numbers, they talked to their families and they decided that most people, because they've been in the system for a couple of years, they were planning to not send their kids in August. Anyway, and it's gonna help their situation. And they're losing more money when they're open than when they're closed. So they've decided to go ahead with, continue with their normal schedule for August, which would be closed. So they got the PPP money for, I believe it was May and June, and they're requesting us waiving their rent for July and August. And my suggestion, and we took this to the childcare committee and Cory and I talked about it at length. And everyone was in support of this and would recommend that the council does waive the rent. For one thing, our other facilities don't pay rent because we own those buildings. And so it's a very equitable thing to do. And then also, you know, we want to set them up to be very, as successful as they can be in the fall when they open again. And financially, they, they need this rent relief. So that's what we need to decide on as a group. And Cory and I would recommend that we waive that rent.
All right, questions for Kelly?
I have a couple of questions. Do we, as we talked about last time, when do the centers plan on ongoing full day? Because I wonder if that also enters people's minds that a half day may not be as useful to them with work because work is usually a full day?
Sure. That varies from center to center.
Okay.
So also, I think. I think the hope is that many of the centers would be able to accomplish that by July. But I don't think any of the boards have voted on that at this time.
Okay. And what about, what about the long waitlist? Have, have people reached out to the waitlist like Montessori about? Would, would anybody?
Yeah, great question. So, so part of the problem, if you remember that those 250 kiddos that are on the waitlist, the vast majority of them are infants and Breck Montessori doesn't service infants. So, and then, and then the other part of the issue right now is that because the restriction on group size was only lifted on Monday, they haven't really had time to like go through, you know, and figure out who's not coming back, who's truly not coming back or if they're gonna lose their spot, will they come back? But also, you know, a lot of our younger rooms are full to capacity at this time, just because of the preschool side, the preschool, the difference between like the infant care rooms and the preschool care rooms. So there is a chance that we'll be reaching out to some of those folks on the waitlist. But it hasn't occurred yet for a number of reasons that I think are, you know, thoughtful at this point.
That makes sense. Thank you.
You just touched on this, but if a parent chooses not to send their kids back now, do they lose their slot going forward? Or do you know?
No, all the, all of the facilities are working with families in different, because they do have to stay involved financially in some capacity in order to save their spot. And if at some point it gets to the point where, oh, we have plenty of space, you know, the the teachers are all working and we feel comfortable having full classrooms and we're able to service people all day. Then the parents who are current, or the families who are currently being served by the centers will, the center will reach out to them and say, you know, how many of your, if you currently have three days, do you want your three days? And if they say, nope, we only have one day, then they will tell them you can either pay for all three days or we will fill two of your days with someone from the waitlist. So it'll be very clear communication with the families, but just knowing also that financially, these centers can't afford to have parents paying for one day and holding five days worth of spots.
Hey, Kelly, have they used all their PPP money?
Um, yes, and they, they've all done it differently. Every single center did it a little bit differently and they, so a couple of the centers will finish their PPP money at the end of June. But yes, everyone has used their PPP money.
All right, what's the will of the council then?
Hey, Kelly, one last question. How much money are we talking?
It's a lot. I mean, I've heard numbers from 10,000 per month to 1,000 per day. So that would probably be around 25 grand a month. Right now.
I thought request was to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rent.
Is that what you're asking? I'm sorry.
Yeah, how much rent are we talking? That they want us.
Or Rick might know that. I don't know that.
It's. $5,000 if you forego two months.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, we should do it.
Thumbs up? All right, there you go. Anything else on childcare?
Well, just that my guess is there will be more asks. And I wonder if there's a way to be proactive in thinking about that. I don't know. It's not, it's not a fully thought out thought. It's just that I know that it's coming and or could be coming and how we want to handle that and be strategic about it.
Yeah, so Erin Lucinda at ECO has reached out to each of the centers and requested that they provide some financial information on just this. The really hard thing right now is that they can't predict anything. I mean, some parents are calling on Monday, you know, they, some parents called Monday of this week and said, okay, now I'm ready to bring my kid back. When two weeks ago, they said, I don't know if we're gonna come back at all this summer, you know? So I think what Lucinda has requested is that as, you know, even weekly information as you find out how many kiddos you're serving and just as up-to-date book information as you can provide, that's what she'd like to have. And so Lucinda and the county are also involved in those discussions and they, they are also aware that there are going to be some additional asks.
Great. I think we should take them as they come, just like this. That's our best option. This way we can, you know, dig into it and decide rather than set a chunk of money aside that we just don't even have any idea what we're gonna be looking for. It would be nice to see the information and since they're already generating it for Lucinda and the O C, it'd be nice to have that information ourselves. So we can sort of get a handle on the depth of the problem. If the problem does come up. So if you could do that, Kelly, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
These updates are pretty helpful, I think, painting a picture of what, what it looks like. Thank you.
Other questions?
I just, one other statement I would make is I think, you know, what Kelly said, that we got, the, the centers need to be pushed to get some certainty. And so I think they've got, you know, they, they've got to get a commitment one way or the other from parents sooner than later so that they can start to map out their financial. Because if they're not gonna commit to these days, they need to open them up to other people. There's a limited pot of money in the childcare fund, so the more we spend now, the less there is later.
Absolutely.
Yeah, interestingly along that, we haven't had very many people reapply. We have put the information out there, like if you have a change of income, you know, greater than 10% either direction. Well, either direction. There's only one direction right now. But if you have, you know, experienced a loss in income, reapply so that you can be reevaluated for the amount. And there haven't been very many. So we'll see.
All right. Committee reports, there was one from the police advisory committee. Anybody have any questions on that? No? And events? Shannon, anything to add?
Thanks, Eric. I, you have the memo. I don't think there was anything earth-shattering in there that you didn't know was coming already. We did provide the list of events that have canceled, as well as a list of events that are still pending that we either haven't heard from or they're trying to make a decision on what they want their event to look like. Dick, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add?
You know, they're working on some creative alternative ideas for Oktoberfest, so more to come on that. Sounds kind of exciting. I think Way Way is delayed and sounds like they're you know, I, there's consideration of cancel or postponing for a year at this point, but that, that also yet to be determined. Yeah, I think that was it.
Any questions?
Thank you for the list. I think that's really helpful. I think the drive-in movie is really exciting. How is that going to work? Do you buy tickets through the BCA? How does, in case people ask?
I don't know that we've heard that yet from the BCA and how they're gonna handle the ticketing piece, but I can find out and let you know.
Okay. And then clearly you drive up and like it's standard drive-up movie theater? Okay, and then clearly you drive up and like it's standard drive-up movie theater?
You're a little young for that, aren't you?
How does this work? This drive-in movie? But I think it's great. Hopefully we'll have several. I think it's a great idea.
Get in the trunk so we didn't have to pay the full price.
We can get like five kids in the trunk of my Oldsmobile.
All right, anything else on events, gang? Very good. Uh, we're going to move on to walkable Main Street update. Shannon, is this you?
It is me. Um, so just in the essence of time, I don't have a whole lot more to offer than what is in the memo. Hopefully that's a pretty complete picture of where we are. I think town staff, the BTO, the other folks who have volunteered their time to participate in this, helped us plan it, have all worked really hard to pull this off. We're super excited. You can tell by the look on Mark Johnson's face how excited he is. But you know, I mean, Public Works has a lot to do this week. One correction from the memos, our plan is to actually shut Main Street on Thursday morning. This will allow Public Works to get the barricades, Jersey barriers, all that, that stuff set up. And then the tables and stanchions will be delivered on Thursday as well. They'll map out the spaces, so for Friday morning, all the businesses will be kind of ready to go. And so we expect, you know, we expect that to run pretty smoothly. Like I said, a lot of preparation has been put into this and a lot of thought into how everything gets set up. In addition to that, there's one other change I wanted to, to bring to your attention or ask your feedback on. We had originally talked about having all the service shut down by 9:00 PM. In a conversation we had last week, one of the restaurant folks who's been working with this, with us on this suggested that 9:00 PM was a little early and that his recommendation would be to do the last seating at 8:45, allow people about an hour to finish their meals and then have the restaurants bring all the chairs and tables and whatnot in for 10 o'clock. So as long as the council feels that's acceptable, we'll move forward with that. Everybody good?
Hey Shannon?
Yes?
How many of the restaurants are intending to tent? We have any sense of that?
I don't think we have a number since they were, those who wanted to do tents were doing them on their own and being permitted through red, white and blue. I've only heard of two or three that were interested and I don't know how many actually moved forward. Mark, do you have any idea?
I don't. I've just heard two or three, two, but no confirmation.
Shannon, are we going to have some messaging about behavior masks and whatnot along the way? I know the, it's up to the individual businesses to, to, you know, enforce or suggest, but are we going to have any sort of messaging from the town in that regard?
Yeah, so in an effort not to have too much kind of sign clutter, which we know from our experience with parking, if there's too many signs, people don't actually even see them. So the signs that Mark and his folks will be putting up on the barricades will be directional. And then on the kiosks, the parking kiosks, those are bagged and all the bags have a a clear panel in them and we're going to put mask and physical distancing information on the kiosks. The businesses also have that information on their doors if people go, actually go up to the doors. And of course, we have the mask banner that's currently hanging over Main Street. So we should have enough information to remind people about both physical distancing and mask use.
What do you mean directional? What, you said the signs would be directional? What, what's that?
Well, we want to make sure that folks know that Ridge Street businesses are also open. So there'll be some signage just to encourage people. And as I mentioned in the memo, the BCA plans for animation will also help kind of draw people up to Ridge Street so we don't just get everyone focused on Main.
Are we going to have any sort of a variable message board or something to direct people to, to park before Main Street to make it easier for them to park and then walk to, to Main Street?
Yeah, so Haley has been working with the ski area and the BTO on messaging that will, was intended to address the South Gondola Lot closure. So we'll still be using that messaging to really encourage people to go to Airport Road where parking is guaranteed. And then we'll be using our big VMS boards to let people know what parking lots are open, which ones are closed and then directing people to Airport Road when the in-town lots get full. We have a meeting on Monday with the ski area and with our internal folks and Breck Park to kind of work out all the details on how that will play out and what the timeline will be.
There, there is concern from some of the restaurants on the 400 block north that to make sure that our messaging does not that people understand that their street is totally open and that you can drive and park in front of their businesses. So we got to make sure on this messaging that it doesn't just say Main Street closed to traffic because there are businesses that are not part of this and we, we need to somehow, to, to add another part to this. We have to make sure that the people, as they drive into town, understand that that is open for them.
I will give that some thought. Thank you.
Rick, we talked at one point about having town employees walking up and down the street, making sure people understood not only the mask regulation, but the liquor regulation. Are we still a go on that?
We're going to accomplish that two different ways. The police department is going to have a plan to try to, try to have seven day coverage out there when the time allows, but if they feel comfortable, they could work something out. So we'll have somebody there generally trying to have a presence and to address complaints. And we spoke with Tom Dev today and they'll assign a couple of people temporarily also to walk that area and look for a compliance with regards to, you know, the tables and also retail. You know, we're concerned with how retail is setting up the outdoor display of merchandise, monitoring that also. And, you know, we, we want to make sure that we kind of work off of a shared, we're keeping a spreadsheet of how we do compliances and where we have issues so that if we have a problem business that isn't following the rules, we could actually pull them from the program.
It's going to be important for that liquor piece. We want to make sure this doesn't get out of hand. Also, and I, I was remiss, I had a chat with the folks from Mountain Tile and Stone and they offered concrete countertops for hand washing stations. If we were interested, if we needed anything like that. So they had just questioned in and I want to make sure that, that did not go unnoticed. So Mark or Shannon, if there is a need for countertops for anything like hand washing or place we want to put something, they were offering those to us. So I have their information, so we can talk about that afterwards. Jim?
Just real quick, this isn't something I have actually shared with Rick and Shannon yet, so they're we do have, we have acquired similar to the Free Ride, we have acquired some masks that our staff will have available as they are walking around.
Great. Thanks Chief. Other questions on walkable Main Street?
I was just wondering if we've done a good job of messaging where the open restrooms are to the retail and I guess any business owner on Main Street, because I think they're going to get a lot of people asking if they can just come in and use their bathroom. So people who don't want to use the porta potties and things like that. So maybe instead of doing lots more signage, just make sure that all those folks on Main Street know where they can be directing people to the open restrooms.
So Tessa at the BTO has done a really good job of already pushing that information out to the businesses. And then Mark has provided a map that has the restrooms on it as well. I believe the BTO is going to push some public facing messaging tomorrow. It was actually planned for today, but we wanted to touch base on the closure time before that went out. So I'll give them a heads up on what we've talked about today and they should push that tomorrow.
You know, maybe even some maps for the businesses would be a good idea, Mark. That's a great question, Kelly. All right, anything else?
I have one other thing that I want to address if there's no more questions on the actual walkable Main Street.
Go ahead, Rick.
So I suspect that we're getting some CARES money back via the state. It's going to be funded through the Division of DOLA, Local Affairs, and there's a couple million dollars coming to Summit County. And one of the conditions is that it has to be agreed upon allocation of how it's divided up between the municipalities and the county based on reimbursable criteria through the Treasury Department. So that, this is money that was spent for allowable expenses COVID related. Our, our business grant program, our rent relief program, the 1.5 million is considered a allowable expense. Most, the allocation formula that's typically used on these is a per capita based on population formula and that's how most places in the state are dividing it. And every, assuming that every community has, in Summit County, obviously, they all have allowable expenses because they all contributed some fashion to either, you know, business relief or rent relief on there. So it looks like, it looks like we'll have about 425,000 coming back to Breckenridge out of the money we spent out of this first round of, of funding. And which, you know, that's great news. We didn't expect to get that money back when we spend it. You know, there is a possibility that there could be some additional local dollars if, you know, any of these other bills pass, but I'm not going to hold my breath on that. But it looks like this 425, it, it is going to happen, is a reality that I would expect we'd get in the next 30 to 60 days on that. So I had a, you know, instead of looking at, do we do another business grant program or do we do something else with this? I think, you know, I was looking at a program that Frisco was doing that, that was like gift card based. It was trying to really push local spending and, you know, for every, for every $75 that somebody spent to buy a gift card that could be used locally, the town matched $25. So basically they got, you know, a hundred bucks for only 75 for the, for the guest. There are some issues with that and I was discussing it with the reopening committee and, and Lucy. And Lucy suggested that, you know, to stay true to our mission, we should try to drive destination a business in town. So we'd be better off to give 75 or a hundred dollar gift certificate to everybody that books three nights lodging in the town to help push the lodging coming in. Then everybody benefits even more for that. So, you know, if this is something that is of interest to you, you know, maybe you want to earmark 100,000, try to continue to push spending and spur the local economy. This way, we would probably do earmark 50,000 right now for any lodging that's booked within the next few weeks. And then we might suggest that we, you know, late summer, we use the other 50 to spur some late summer, early fall lodging that we might want to do that way. I just wanted to throw that out because if it is something that is of interest to you and you want to earmark a hundred grand out of that money, we're getting back to do that. It's, it's something we need to start working on the logistics right away.
Do, I mean, do you guys think that people, that, that would be a motivating factor? Someone booking a short-term vacation or whatever here in Breck, a hundred bucks is going to make a difference?
I'm with you Jeffrey. I had this exact same thought. Someone's going to book for three nights or more. They get a hundred bucks. Personally, I'd rather take that, have that money in a reserve if we need to do more. You know, through, through FERC and other social agencies personally.
I, I completely agree. And, um, yeah, I, I, I don't think I'm there yet to start adding that kind of motivation when we don't know what things will look like. But yes, absolutely what Gary said about, you know, FERC, FERC went through that money so quickly and I feel like some other events may come and they may not. And, and then maybe we could use it for something like that, but I think it's too early to tell if, if there's another wave or if there are waves of layoffs. I'd like to wait on it.
I like, I like the gift card idea, but, and also I, I think after what Kelly was talking about with the childcare deal, I think that's a crucial. Could be a crucial spend, so yeah.
I'm in agreement to save it for a social program of some kind. You know, the, I know the food banks are getting hit really hard and let's, you know, I, I guess I would see that being good use.
Dennis, since it's a rebate, I'd like to hold on to it as well. Kelly?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with holding on to it. I agree that I'm not really sure how big of a difference it would make. I mean, if, would it make a big difference? Are we wrong all saying that that doesn't sound like a huge motivator?
When Rick and I talked about this originally with, with Lucy, you know, if it's going to Vail, going to Stevo, coming to Breck and getting what in essence would be dinner, you know, dinner somewhere. I thought, sounds like a great program. Our rent relief that we did mainly affected retail restaurant didn't really help the big lodging companies at all. And I, I thought this was a way to give something back to the lodgers that didn't, didn't get any help from us first time around. They've been having, you know, some of them like Beaver Run still can't have meaning sizes greater than 10, which is really hampering them. I did have a call with Barto before this and he was, was happy with the way the weekend went. But they're, you know, they're going to, they're going to have some trouble pulling people in. It's just an incentive. I, I don't disagree with any of the comments that you have made however, so.
The only thing I would say is that hopefully that FERC money did go to employees of lodging companies. So hopefully they were also helped out with that.
Okay, good enough. I'll also let you know that anytime you have, the water plant stores chlorine gas because chlorine is used as a disinfectant in our water. So health and safety requires a windsock on any storage facility that has chlorine. In case there's ever a leak, they can detect which direction that leak is.
There you go Jeffrey.
Here Rick, Shannon, I've got one more question and this, this is, I guess, more about Main Street than anything. But, you know, most of us attended the Wiel protest the other night. And if this isn't the appropriate time, I'll certainly talk to you later. But how do people go about putting in their application for a protest? And then how is it, how is it decided that yes, we'll let you do it?
There is no, I mean, we don't, we don't permit those peaceful protests because they're allowed to occur. So we don't, we don't have an application process. We, you know, the last ones have worked with us. On being at short notice, they have worked with us, so we've tried to keep them, you know, as safe as possible and do it in a way that doesn't, you know, create, create safety issues for either the motorists or the people marching.
We're pretty careful about what we require of folks when it comes to First Amendment free speech. So we don't want to put anything in place that would restrict someone's ability to rightfully speak freely. So we have in the past, when folks have wanted to say use Blue River Plaza, we've asked them to provide us with information on what their plan is. But we don't require a permit.
Makes sense.
All right, so we're going to move, if you're good, we're going to need to move to the Alta Verde project. We have about 30 minutes. We're going to get a brief overview of what, kind of what's proposed out there and have some time for some questions and comments. This is your opportunity to provide some early feedback on what you're seeing. I do want to make sure that we have at least 15, 20 minutes before we go into the night meeting for another topic. So keep that in mind, please.
Okay, Nicole, Kimball Krangall in the house, in someone's house. Go ahead, Nicole.
Um, so I am going to share my screen here in a minute, but I just wanted to kind of give an introduction. As you just said her name, Kimball Krangall is here with Warren to provide a brief presentation. That's going to overview the low income housing tax credit and really where Alta Verde is in the process. And then we just have a couple of questions at the end that we put in your memo. And we wanted to save, save some room for discussion as we are really starting to hone in on, starting to develop our elevation. So we wanted to check in with you guys, but I'm going to share my screen and then pass it along to Kimball to go through the slides. So just me hope this works well. So let's see. Can everyone see what's on my, on the Alta Verde Lytec overreap presentation? Okay, I will mute myself and Kimball, you can go ahead and start.
Great. Hi, everybody. It's good to be in front of you. Yes, I'm hiding in my basement, hoping my kids can't find me. So that will make it interesting if they do. So it's great to be back in front of you. We are very excited that we did receive a low income housing tax credit award to help finance the Alta Verde affordable housing project in partnership with the town of Breckenridge. And we wanted to be able to give just a quick overview of what low income housing tax credit means. It's often referred to as Lytec, and that just means low income housing tax credit. It is one of the largest affordable multifamily housing programs in the country. And it's controlled by the IRS. So it's an Internal Revenue Code that was passed in the 1986 and first started in 1987. It's administered every state by the State Housing Finance Authority. In our case here in Colorado, that's CHAF. And what it really does is it is a tool to divert private investment into affordable housing. And so investors that may have a federal tax liability can take that tax dollar amount and invest it into affordable housing and generally get a break on their tax dollars that are owed by instead investing in affordable housing projects. They also receive other benefits such as depreciation, tax losses, other write offs. And so it's a program that we've been using, like I said, since 1987 and has been very, very successful for several decades. It can be used to fund new construction, like we'll be doing for Alta Verde. Or some folks use it for acquisition rehab of existing projects. And it's generally targeted to households and individuals earning 60% of the area median or less area median income. Really what it does is when you limit the rent on any household, any apartment home, but you still need the debt to pay to build that project. There's a financial gap that is created because you can't get enough of the mortgage out to cover the cost to build the project. And this tax credit equity comes into the project to help fill that gap. That is what helps keep rents low. That is the subsidy in these deals. There are two types of tax credits. There's a 4% or a 9%. We were successful in the 9% round. And in this case, there will be a 40 year LURA, L U R A, which is the Land Use Regulatory Agreement with CHAF that maintains the area median income affordability targets. However, through the partnership with the town, these will be perpetually affordable through the ground lease mechanism. We can go to the next slide. This is what our, this is kind of the brain damage that goes into tax credit deals. I know, it's really fun, actually, you get into it. But, you know, it, it, it takes a lot of folks to pull an affordable housing project off. And I think that's really the takeaway of this chart is to see who the players are that are involved to help make sure that the dollars coming in are spent where they're supposed to be spent and that there's long-term accountability and sustainability of that investment. And so, you know, as the local government, as the landowner, town of Breckenridge is heavily involved, obviously, in this deal. But as the developer of this site, we'll be working with equity investors, lots of attorneys, tax credit equity syndicators, HUD, the State Division of Housing, the IRS, et cetera. So what this means to the people that we're actually trying to service are the folks that are making, generally speaking, between 30% of area median income and 60% AMI. And the top box shows you for Summit County, the 2020 income and rent levels. You know, for a one-person household, that would be earning under $40,000 a year if they're a 60% AMI renter. We also will be offering a handful of units at 30% of area median income. So if you're a one-person household, that would mean you're making less than $20,160. So those are largely targeted for folks that may be on fixed incomes. You know, or, or otherwise. And then, you know, if you have two people, that could be a single parent and a child. It could be two adults. You know, the households can be made up in lots of different ways, but you kind of mix and match where their income lies versus what the rents end up being. So our one-bedroom rents at Alta Verde will be between $433 and $934 a month. Our two bedrooms will go between $512 per month and $1,114 a month. And then the three bedrooms up to $1,280 a month. So Alta Verde as an overview, we will be able to construct 80 units that will include one, two, and three-bedroom homes. Again, between 30 and 60% AMI. 64 are technically tax credit units. And then we'll have 16 units that will still be rent capped with a different income cap than is typically required in the tax credit program. In all, winning that 9% tax credit award, which is pretty competitive in the state, we're able to bring about $13 million of tax credit equity to the town of Breckenridge in this asset that otherwise would have gone somewhere else. We'll funnel in other funding sources, including construction mortgage, first mortgage, funding from the town of Breckenridge in the form of a loan, Division of Local Affairs funding, and Division of Housing funding. We anticipate starting some of the initial offsite utility work in August and going vertical in March. So this is Nicole's chart, which I love because it shows us much further along than it will feel like. Once we start going vertical, it'll feel like it takes forever. But, you know, when we started after we won the RFP selection back in 2019 and late 2019, we really didn't know if we would be successful achieving this tax credit award. So the fact that we did and we're on the preferred timeline track is really exciting for our whole team. And we are fully into the initial stages of design of the project. So we will want to start construction in March, meaning our financial closing in March. Part of that is, is tied to the tax credits themselves. They are, time is of the essence kind of tax credit awards. So there are built-in mechanisms to keep us moving on that track. This is where our site plan is right now. We are working as our team now pretty diligently to understand the various impacts of the site. So I think you all know where the McCain housing site is, but you know, Stan Miller Drive runs along the eastern side of the site. Across the street is the water treatment plant. The building center is just up in Catty Corner. We are looking at three separate buildings. Amenities on the site to include a tot lot, dog run area, and community gardens. We're looking at some garage spaces. Initially, when we looked at our site plan, we were talking about carports. One of the goals of this entire site is to get to net zero energy. And the town of Breckenridge, through Jesse Burley and Nicole Rexx, were able to apply for and receive funding from the Division of Local Affairs to help offset that net zero cost. And we can get to net zero on the site. It requires some creativity about how much roof area to make available for space. And as we started looking at carports, we realized that, that the wind force on a carport structure was such that it's actually cheaper for us to build garages to act as that structure to hold the PV, the photovoltaic panels on top. So we'll be playing with this site plan a little bit before we come back in front of you to show you where we've ended up. Some things will not change. Our parking will not change. Our amenity package will not change. We are intent on running the bike way through and adjacent to the site to help that further connectivity. And our unit mix won't change. So at this stage, we're just really making sure that we're capturing as much solar gain on the site as we can to maximize the potential for net zero as well as, you know, livability on the site. The neighbors right now are going to be maintained the way they are for the near term. The neighbor to the north is the concrete batch plant. The neighbor to the south is the snow storage site. And so we're really looking at how to maximize livability for the eventual residents that will live here and call this home while providing great access to pedestrian and bikability in the onsite amenities.
So I think Kimball did a really good job kind of prefacing these questions we had for you, really specifically to, I'm kind of pursuing, you know, a flat roof design. I know we have talked about it before, but we're really starting to hone in on, in on the design. And obviously to get the maximum solar access and achieve net zero, we will have to have less pitched roofs and a more solar design or a flat roof design. And that kind of goes into her conversation or the discussion about we've changed from carports to garages in order to get closer to that net zero goal. And we wanted to get, you know, your guys' support or comments regarding that and to see if you guys are still on board with those design changes. And I think since we last spoke, we did, that's when the carports had changed to garages. So I know you guys haven't seen that yet. And really we wanted to get your guys' general comments on design. If there's anything that you guys, before we really, you know, hone in on that. And, you know, we'll be back to see you on July 14th with more finished elevations. So you guys can see, you know, materials, colors, roof lines. But before we went there, we wanted to get your feedback and to kind of show you guys where we're at in this process. So if you guys have any thoughts on this, we'd love to hear it.
Thanks, Nicole. So let's, anybody have any questions first? Quick questions about, go ahead, Dennis.
So Nicole, if we're going to be, if you would like to use that flat roof design, are you go, or do you anticipate having to use heat tape? Make the water run into the gutters and the scuppers and?
Yeah, can I jump in for you?
Yes.
We would definitely have to.
I can't see everyone anymore.
Hi, this is Kimball again. We would definitely have to engineer that roof to make sure that there wasn't ice damming or other issues for just operations of that. When we say flat, we don't mean perfectly flat. We mean there would be a pitch, but it would be flatter than I think what many buildings throughout town.
12 or a 312 or?
We haven't determined exactly yet. We're starting to get into the solar design and engineering for maximum solar gain. And the site plan plays into that. But yeah, it would be, it would be pretty flat compared to what I think you're used to seeing.
Just a follow, a follow-up question on the roofs, Kimball. Projects that you've done to date, have you done many flat roof or semi-flat roof projects?
We sure have. You know, the, the architectural style, and I say style in quotes, but in Denver, a lot of flat roofs are done for a lot of varying reasons. Infill sites that have a tighter site area often use flat roofs to, for stormwater detention. So we actually, in, in our Denver projects, do use flat roofs for stormwater detention that are very flat as well as solar photovoltaics.
Have, Kimball, have you used them in a mountain environment?
So we have some shed roofs over at our Wintergreen site in Keystone. And we do have some flat roofs at our Lions Ridge property in Vail. They absolutely require very meaningful engineering and thought for not only snow load, but, you know, just being sustained for a longer period of time.
So, you know, so on these, the, the photovoltaic cells, will they be on the flat, on the flat roof?
Yes.
And is there, is, is, what happens when they get covered with snow on a, because on a pitch roof, the snow kind of slides off on a flat roof. Would, would that kind of negate some of the benefit of the, the solar panels?
As we engineer and model what the productivity is of those photovoltaic panels, we take into account downtime for when there is snow coverage on panels. We're lucky to get a lot of sunshine here, but there also will be an operations plan of actually brooming off those PV panels to get them to be productive again. So when we talk net zero and you bring up a really good point, we will talk about that it's not like net zero for the day. It's, it's either net zero for a six-month or a 12-month period to take into account the highs and the lows.
Any other questions?
So Kimball, I, I had a conversation with one of the builders that just built very close. Kenny Thamer, he did a joint project with the town. And he said that the, the flat roof concept can work, but that it, up here, because we have seven months of snow, it requires heat tape. And I don't know if we can get to our net zero running the heat tape. And that's not a statement, it's a question.
Sure, it, it's a valid question. We'll have to dig into it.
Hey Dennis, I have a massive flat roof on our building in the middle of town. And we do have heat tape, but we don't have as much as you would think that we have. We really only have heat tape in the, in the drains and that's it. So, you know, this building has been here for, since the late seventies and was not designed nearly as well as I'm sure these homes will be. And while we have had problems over the years, you know, a lot of it has to do with, with the, the roof treatment, how the, you know, membrane is treated. And I know things are a lot better now than, God, I think the last time we roofed this thing was 20 years ago. So, and for the most part, it's very successful and not nearly, it's not nearly as bad as people think flat roofs are, so.
That's a good test.
And I wanted to mention really quick that the, the building, we didn't, I don't think we put it, we said it, we're on the site plan. It is only two stories and I think it seems like that's a lot of units. And it might be assumed that'd be three, but I think, you know, being behind the water treatment plant, the profile and, and being the visibility of, of the site, not that it'll look awesome, but, you know, I think that it will be more lower profile than some of our other apartment buildings that are taller. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to fit well into the kind of existing form that's around it. So I just wanted to mention that really quick as we're talking flat roofs. So we're picturing height, we can't picture height yet because we don't have the elevations finished, but they are intended to be two-story, not three-story buildings.
Thanks, Nicole. Okay, I want to go through these three questions real quick. We'll start with.
Thanks Nicole. Okay, I want to go through these three questions real quick. We'll start with Dennis.
Yeah, I, my biggest question is the flat roof for sure. Second question is, yes, I do support garages that have screws on them. That, that does make sense to me. That's all I've got.
All right, Gary?
Yes, yes, no.
Jeffrey?
I'm with G squared. Yes, yes, no. I will defer to the people that do this for a living about the flat roofs and the need for a garage other than a carport for the structural stability. So yeah, yes, yes, no.
Dick? Hey Dick, go ahead. You're, you're muted.
Yes, yes, no. I'm with Jeffrey and double G.
Aaron?
Yes, yes. And I look, I, I know that last time there was, Kelly made a comment about how the entrance was right into the kitchen. And I look forward to seeing how that is changed.
We have spent some good time on that and have found some really creative solutions. So we can't wait to show it to you.
Fantastic.
Kelly?
Um, I agree with the flat roof. I love that it's a garage. I think that equals livability up here. So I think that's terrific news. And then I have a question, but it might be too much for this. I was a little surprised to see how little 30% AMI equals. And I was wondering if we find that we can't fill those units, and I could be totally wrong, but if we find that we can't, can we modify that? Or are we three units at 30% AMI forever?
So we'll be three units at 30% AMI for the length of the Lura.
Oh, okay.
Which is 40 years. And the reality is it is a requirement for some of the state funding that you have 5% at 30% AMI. We purposely keep those to one and two bedrooms. So we do not have a 30% at a three bedroom because it'd be really hard to fill. To be honest, you're on to something. It's, those units fly off the shelf in metro areas. They're harder to fill in rural mountain resort areas. And so if we have incredible hardship consistently filling those units, we can go back and ask for a modification on that. I've never had to do that. Largely what you'll find is that if somebody lands in that housing unit, it's because they are on some sort of consistent, whether it's a Medicaid system or social security, social security disability insurance. Those folks are on a fixed income like that and there's really not other options. And so the turnover tends to be pretty low. And at Wintergreen, we have filled the units there that we had at 30% AMI. One of them took a little bit longer for sure.
Great. Okay, thanks. It's a really exciting project.
All right. And I, I agree. My, I think flat roofs can work. I do like the garages. And I just have to say at this point, Kimball, we are, I'm sure all of us are just very pleased with the faith we had in you getting the Lytec. It's incredible to get that 9% and I, you know, we sat around talking about what happens if you, if we don't get it and well, don't have to worry about that. So thank you very much.
Definitely.
Congratulations to you and your team and you also Nicole and Lori for all the hard work. This is really, this is fantastic news. So look forward to the next phase.
Thank you.
All right. Rick? We want to tee up this next discussion. You're muted buddy. You're on mute.
I can lip read. So I wanted to provide some time for the council and this is not a lot of time for you to dig very deep into discussions around social equity, what we might want to do. The one thing, one thing that we took a little bit of liberty in, in, in putting together in hopes that you might support this is a resolution that would create this Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Mission, which you were all shared with a copy of that resolution. If you're supportive of this, then we would add that to the agenda tonight. And you know, if it passes, then we would be in a position to start putting this mission together. We do think, we do think that is, it is important for this, for there to be a committee of committed individuals that bring a, not only, you know, a diverse background and thinking to the table to work with us. You know, we don't know what we don't know and you know, we're used to looking through the lens that we look through every day as we go about our, our governance here. And I think we're all, and I'm not going to speak for you, but certainly from conversations I've heard with many of you and from the staff perspective, we're open to looking at opportunities for change and to be more inclusive. So you know, you, you may notice that this was set up to be a temporary committee and it was done that way on purpose. Certainly not because this is a temporary, quick fix or an easy solution. Quite the contrary, a temporary committee could go on for as long as the council desires. And the only way to disband this would be by another resolution at whatever council is in place. But the main reason that we wanted this to be a temporary as opposed to a permanent board or commission is because the town charter, the town charter clearly governs the rules around a permanent board or commission. And that the people that sit on that must be residents and electors of the town. And we didn't want to tie your hands. And, and you know, that the people that, you know, that you put on this could only be residents or electors of the town. Because quite frankly, many of the people that work in the town don't live in the town. And some of our key partner organizations that may be critical to working with us are, are not necessarily located within the town. And you know, years ago, some of you may recall when we did the, the Breckenridge Economic Development Committee, that was set up to be a temporary committee and their the requirements were, you know, they didn't want people just, because there are many people that work in the town that don't live in the town. And we wanted to include some of those people in that committee. So anyways, that's the reason that it is set up as a temporary committee. It also gives you the, as a temporary committee, it also gives you a little bit of latitude in having more than one council representative set on the committee if you want. You know, under the permanent boards, it clearly identifies only one council member is appointed to sit on those committees. So that's the reason for that. And with that, I will kind of turn it over and maybe Dick, you want to say a few words or Eric? I know Dick, you've taken some of this and really run with it the last few days and you've reached out to Park City to talk a little bit about their social equity goal and learn from that. So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I did. Eric, do you want to speak and I can jump in or?
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I spoke to Andy Beerman, the mayor of Park City for, for quite a while and their program is, is, is three years old. And he, he felt like it was, it was as successful as ever and he, you know, he gave me a lot of great advice, you know. But you know, I, I guess, you know, this whole equity piece, you know, are we talking social justice? Are we talking social equity? You know, I, to me, social justice is a piece of social equity. I'm thinking a very broad in scope program, you know, one about, about embracing diversity and, and inclusion. Collaborative in, in effort was another thing. Andy said, you know, he said, he's certain and we do, we've got a lot of nonprofits and a lot of philanthropy doing pieces of this work. And we, we very much want to collaborate and, and, and work with those folks that are, that are already in it. He's, you know, I, I, I see us working with, well, Rick said it beautifully, what we don't know, we don't know. And you know, there's so many groups in our committee that, that are, are in our community that are somewhat marginalized and, and you know, we're all of like people, you know, we're all Caucasian. We're sitting up here and we're, we're running the town and many of the, the boards are, are of, of like people and et cetera, et cetera. So you know, it would be my hope that we would, we would put this committee together with, with people living this every day and not necessarily like people that, that work in the, in the field. You know, is, is people that, that live, you know, live this day in and day out. So you know, the, the organizer of the march last Monday, I, I thought said it quite well. He said it's incumbent upon us as a, as a very white group, because that's who was there. It wasn't entirely, but, but it was the vast majority. He said, we need to get out, we need to educate ourselves and we need to broaden ourselves and, and we need to work hard at this. And I thought it was quite well said. So I, I've gotten a lot of information from Park City. I've got a 30-page strategic plan that is, is extremely interesting. A lot of data that they've done, a number of surveys and studies that, that Andy has shared with us. And you know, I see that as a starting point. I, I don't see us trying to copy what Park City's doing. We're similar communities. We're not exactly, we're not, you know, like communities though. And, and I think Breckenridge is quite unique and we can take a very unique approach to this and really make some progress. It's going to be hard work. It's going to take time. But I, I don't know, I feel very strongly. This is an important thing to undertake.
Well said, Dick. And I want to thank Dick and Rick and Shannon for doing this work. You know, we spent a lot of time on the phone and, and Rick and Shannon and I in person and talking about what our response would be to what's going on in the country right now. And you know, this is definitely a piece of it. So we really did think it was important to have more than one councilman. I'd like to have two on when we get to it. We did think it was really important to have people that were not just residents of the town. You know, if you live in French Creek, you're not a resident of the town. And there are plenty of people in our community up here in the Upper Blue that can help us with this. And so that'll be an important piece. So what I'd like to do if we pass this resolution this evening is for the next meeting, start thinking about how the framework for this. What council people would like to be on it. I have talked to a couple of you so far. I think Dick's done a lot of legwork and I'd like him to be one of those council people. But we'll think about it and at the next meeting, then we can, we can put this together if you guys are okay with adopting this resolution this evening. So any questions from the group?
No, just, I want to applaud your efforts. Thanks for Shannon, Dick, Rick, Eric. Yeah. Good work.
I agree with Jeffrey. It's an idea whose time has come. Thank you.
I agree. I think absolutely. I, I think that, you know, we've all, I'm sure, read and different action items that we can take. And I think this is definitely one that is a positive action item that we can, we can help to guide our way forward. So I think it's fantastic. Thank you for everybody who's worked on it.
What I was pleased to hear, Dick, was the fact that the admission that, you know, we can't be looking at it just through our lens. We've really got to be able to bring people onto this committee who, because we haven't walked in their shoes. And we really need to have people who have actually walked in those shoes and have really, in various degrees, really had to live and feel the social inequities. Everything from, you know, whether it's, you know, policing, whether it's housing, whether it's how you feed your kids. It's all of those issues. And a lot of it comes down to really the difference in wealth. If you don't have some wealth, then you really find yourself behind the eight ball and, and all these areas. How do I feed my family? When you're hired, it's lifeless, last in, first out, right? You're the last one hired and you're the first one fired. So it's all of those issues that really have to be knitted together to come up with a, I'll call it ultimately, you know, a program and some goals and, and some steps along the way. So I think it's a great program and thank you for those of you who have really gotten behind it.
All right. Yep.
We will add that. It sounds like everybody's supportive. We'll add that to the evening agenda for you to take official action. It will be added as a resolution number 17.
You got that, Jeffrey?
Yeah.
To the new meeting. The other thing that we'd like to get some direction is is a council, would the council like to do some sort of communication piece? And Eric shared with you a couple of examples, one Moab, one Park City. There's been other ones that have come out, you know, that can come out in the form of a letter from the council to the community based on, you know, basic, your feelings about what's happening currently in the country and how you want to proceed forward as a council, what you're committed to. Obviously, would it include some piece about, you know, this advisory commission that you're going to hear tonight? It could also come in the form of a, you know, a proclamation, some type of a proclamation if it wasn't in a letter. I, I don't know that it matters so much the format as, you know, is there some messaging that you want as a group to put out there to the community? And you know, Haley's been looking at some things that are out there and they certainly started to jot some ideas on paper. And if this is something you feel you want to do, I would ask her to work with you as a council and coming up with some sort of document that you could agree upon and how, that we would distribute that out.
I, I think it's important for us to have something that we can do that we that we can, you know, hang on the, the council chambers. I, I'd like to do it as a letter, a letter to the community at large about some of the things that we believe in. I think it's important that we as a group acknowledge some of the things that our police department has done over the years to get it to where it is now and some of the things that the chief may want to do here in the future. So just a couple of thoughts from me. Kelly?
Yeah, I agree, Eric. I mean, I think it's so important that we come out as a group and just talk about how we're going to make room for, you know, to reach out to our, to the community members that aren't represented here, that they feel welcome, that they feel safe. I just, I see this, you know, it's been an incredibly depressing couple of weeks, but I do see it as such an opportunity to do a really good job of inclusion entity. And I think there have been lots of great things that have been done here over the years. And but hopefully this is our opportunity to really do something big that, you know, that opens it up, that makes Breckenridge feel a little less white elitist, you know, type of a community and just says, but we care for all of those around us and they make our community what they are. I think it, I, I really think it's important that we write a message to our community and say something like that.
Thanks Kelly. Aaron?
Yeah, I, I thought we were going to talk about that tonight. I, I think that we need to do that. I think not making a statement is making a statement. And I think our community is really waiting to hear what we're, what our stances and how we'll approach it. And yeah, absolutely. Let's do it. Let's do it soon.
Gary?
Yeah, I think it's a, we should do it. And I recognize at the end of the day, if something is going to get done in a big way, you'll be more successful starting at the local level as opposed to what we see is the chicanery and the nonsense that goes on at a federal and state level. We always know at a local level, things can get done, things can get accomplished, politics can be set aside. can be set aside. And, uh, this is a wonderful opportunity not to be squandered, to do something now.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, I'm in. Yeah, I, I think the messaging could be, could be the Cliff Notes of what, uh, what Dick very, very aptly, uh, spoke of. And, and also mixed with that, I, I do think there's a, uh, a, a benefit of recognizing what we've done in the, in the past. I think we were one of the first communities to provide same-sex benefits to our employees, uh, for their, for their, their same-sex partners and whatnot. So, um, a message of, of a proclamation of what our goals are, what our hopes and dreams are to make this thing happen and as well as a, a bit of a recognition of what our, uh, police force and staff has done in the past.
Uh, Dennis?
I say yes to all of that. And one of the things I would love to do is if we could make the flavor of this letter what we are for, not what we're against. Um, I love the idea of making it a positive message to our community.
Any final thoughts, Dick?
I, I agree with everything said and, and particularly your thoughts, Eric. You know, the, the police department, we've got three, um, we have a current chief and two former chiefs on, online with us right now. And I can speak firsthand to the hard work they've done in community policing and, and, uh, creating a culture in, in our PD, um, that, that really demonstrated themselves at, at the march. I was very, very proud of the police department at our march. We also need to recognize it's a work in progress and the work needs to continue. And, you know, we need to continue to ask the hard questions and, and make the hard challenges and, and have accountability. So, um, yeah, that's really it.
So the other thing we need to do is start thinking about people who, um, will belong on this commission that we're going to put together. Um, you know, it's going to be important for things like, you know, when we, when we talk about what our donation to FERC is going to be, a lot of times we talk about it in, in the tone of, well, what's the rest of the county giving? Because we're going to end up having to give more. And that's never the way we should be handing out funds for social programs. What we should be doing is figuring out what we should be giving out for social programs, period, and not worrying about what anybody else does. So some, those are some of the things, you know, we, we've done great work with affordable housing. Um, we've done, you know, a lot of great stuff. And I think there's a lot of other stuff we can do and, you know, maybe it's a, a change in the way we spend money once, um, we, you know, set it, set a new course for the town. So, um, I'm looking forward to this. We need to find people that will challenge what we do. They can't just sort of go along with the same train of thought. We want to find people that are going to say, hey, you know what you guys really need to do is this. Go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, I totally agree with you, Eric. And if we're successful, you know, we need to bring a lens of equity, of social equity to every single decision we make, you know, because it, it touches everywhere. And, and you don't realize it until you start digging in, but, uh, you know, that, that, uh, i- is, is kind of one of my big visions of this is, is that, that it, it really gives us the tools to have this lens with every single thing we talk about and do.
Dick, I, I completely agree. And I think, you know, similar to how we've talked about sustainability and with, when the group came in about, you know, sustainability 2030 and how that started to become a new lens of how we look at things. I, I could totally see this group being something similar. And as we build workforce housing, as we do work on programs and things like that, of trying to create equality, to have a group to, to weigh in on, well, is this really what is serving a need? You know, I, I've heard Nicole talk about, you know, community building within, within these communities that we're trying to build and, and what does that really look like? And I, I absolutely agree.
Okay. Uh, night meeting starts in five minutes. Um, are we just staying right on this Zoom, Rick? Okay. If anybody needs a quick break, this is the time.
Just mute your, mute your ca-, uh, your mic. And what we can be.
Watching us, we, um, we'll take, uh, public comment. Uh, we do it in two fashions. There is a, um, a communications to council session that comes up relatively soon here at the beginning. Um, as long as you're not talking about something that is on the agenda, you're welcome to, uh, send us, at the bottom tab, there's a Q and A. You can type as a question. I will read those and we will answer them or, uh, or tell you how we'll, we'll go about answering whatever you need. Um, once I ask for it, you get 30 seconds to type something in and, uh, then we'll proceed with the regular meeting. We do have a bunch of legislative issues. If you're here to talk about any of those, we'll use the same format. You go to the Q and A at the bottom. I'll give 30 seconds for somebody to type something up. If you don't, I'll assume that nobody has anything to say. Um, if you would rather not engage right now, you're always welcome to engage the entire council at mayor, at townofbreckenridge.com. Those go through the staff and every one of those comes to us, um, shortly thereafter. The staff answers a lot of them, but they send everyone to us, um, and let us know how they were answered, um, because a lot of times they're just questions that the staff knows the answer to. And honestly, sometimes we don't. So, there you go. So with that being said, I'm going to call this meeting to order and can we have a roll call, please, Helen?
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Carlton?
Here.
Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
What?
Mr. Coon? Got to unmute yourself.
Here.
There you are. Ms. Jello?
Here.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. All right. Uh, approval of minutes for the town council meeting of May 26, 2020. Does anybody have any changes, corrections, violations, additions? Seeing none of the minutes stand as presented, agenda, Rick?
Uh, one change to the agenda under new business, um, resolutions add number three, resolution number 17, series 2020, a resolution creating a temporary advisory commission known as the Town of Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission.
Rick, could you send, uh, send me that, uh, title so I can read it when the time comes, please? Just do it by message, it'd be fine. Alrighty. Um, with that, we go to communications to council. We do not have, uh, we don't have ski resort update tonight, so that'll give us a little more time. So anybody in the public that would wish to make a comment this evening, please use the Q and A tab at the bottom. And, uh, we'll give you a little bit of time here. Give, uh, you time to type. Typing something really long. If you just want to say, I'm typing something really long, you can do that too.
When are we going to meet in person? You guys have a, have a sense of that?
We've decided to keep you on Zoom for the rest of the four years that you're on.
Yeah, I'll lose some weight because, uh, I'm eating on the fly.
Rick, are we thinking July?
Yeah, we are thinking July. Uh, we're looking at how we could retrofit council chambers and, uh, trying to understand what other places are doing and how we may still only allow people in to make public comment one at a time or, uh, we're trying to set up our Granicus system to use it the way it was ultimately designed that would allow, um, public comments, uh, to occur, uh, you know, electronically. So some places are allowing council to meet in person, but the public still has to, uh, it's a, it's kind of a hybrid virtual and in-person. So, um, we're trying to work through it and our target is that first meeting in July right now. I think it's the 14th, right? Something like that? Cause I'm sitting between two high-risk people.
Oh, Jeffrey. Okay. Um, so nobody's written anything in, but you can always comment, uh, like I said, to ma-, oh, there's one. Uh, so Leo Wachowski, uh, said, did I hear correct, that social equity advisory board would be a temporary board? I think that it should be permanent. Yes. And let me, uh, explain why. The way our charter is written, um, and Rick and Shannon and I had a long discussion about this today. So the way the charter is currently written, if the Town of Breck Council puts a permanent board via the charter together, there can only be one council person and everybody that serves on that board, uh, must be a resident of the Town of Breckenridge. In order to get away from those two requirements, we do this as a temporary board. This way we can have one or two council people and we can put anybody on the board that we deem fit. We know that there are people that live in the community that don't necessarily live in the Town of Breckenridge boundaries. So we adopt this by resolution. The board would not go away unless another town council at some later date would formally adopt a resolution to dissolve that board. So for all intents and purposes, this board is pretty permanent, even though it says temporary, it really is a very permanent board. And, uh, I don't see us, at, at least this council, um, doing anything to disband this board anytime, um, soon. So, um, at some point, if we get to the point that, you know, we want to change it and make it a, a chartered board, um, we could. But again, it, it really does leave a lot of people off that, um, we think we'd like to have on it. If you work in the Town of Breck and you live down valley somewhere and we think you should be on the board, we'd like to have you on. So that, that's the reasoning. So, and we think it's a legit reas- reason. Uh, and that was the only question tonight, so I'm going to, um, end the citizen comment period and we're going to go to the, uh, Breckenridge, um, tourism office update. Do we have Lucy or Brett tonight?
Yep, I'm here.
How are you?
Hi, everyone.
Welcome.
Um, let me just start and say, I, I really applaud this direction of a social equity, um, commission. Um, BTO is, is into support, whatever, wherever that goes, um, in any way we can. Um, you, you may know that when we were in the destination management, um, plan process, we tried reaching out to our Hispanic community and we're not successful in being able to engage there. So I couldn't agree more that there's a lot of work, uh, to be done in, in figuring out how to be more inclusive and making people feel comfortable in, in leaning in and, um, working a little more closely with the decision-making process here. Um, so again, kudos to all of you for that and Dick for taking the lead on that. Um, moving over to BTO, um, business priorities. Uh, we are, uh, primarily working on reopening recovery, um, and community communication projects. Um, just quickly, at the state level, the Colorado Lodging, Hotel and Lodging Association is putting together a campaign to encourage the, uh, the governor and folks at the state level to open up lodging to 75% occupancy in August and 100% by September. And also allow groups up to 250 people. Some communities have, um, been given those variances. Um, we will be writing a letter of support for that position from CADMO, the Colorado Association of DMOs. Um, you know, conditions permitting, of course. So, um, that's on, on the table. Also, um, at the state level, uh, the long bill, which is the budget, the state budget's gone to the governor's office and, uh, their state budget rolls on July 1st, so that approval or reallocation, all of that work will happen July 1st. Uh, right now, the CTO, um, their line item in the budget is, uh, just over a 37% cut from last year. Um, C6s, which is what the BTO is, nonprofit C6, um, we're still not eligible for the payroll protection program under the new federal guidelines. And the governor is allocating $70 million to help businesses that haven't been able to get any federal assistance. So we're hopeful that we might be able to get, be part of that. So more to come on that. Um, Shannon already touched on reopening on Maine. I would just add a little bit, Jeffrey, you had asked about the safety messaging in advance. That is what, um, you know, we've got a lot of information on the website. We will have huge banners in the, um, BTO, in the, uh, welcome center, um, helping people, you know, know what the expectations are here in town. Um, in addition to the, uh, the Main Street banner and parking meter signage that Shannon talked about, we're also doing, um, these, uh, stickers that go on the concrete and we'll be putting that in Blue River Plaza where people might be wanting to move tables around to get a little closer together or whatever. We're going to mark that off with these stickers, talk about six feet apart. Um, so I think we're pretty, pretty good on the messaging. I would be shocked if somebody didn't wear a mask because they didn't know, they might not wear a mask because they don't want to, but, um, I, I think we're pretty good without going overboard. Um, on the lodging and the retail, um, gift certificates that Rick mentioned, um, I did a quick pencil here and, and I am going to send something to Rick, uh, tomorrow, just with, uh, put some numbers to that. And I would hope that you might be open to just re-looking at that again. So I'll just leave it there. Um, July 4th, so we're working on, uh, how that's going to play out. Of course, no parade. Um, Hal Vacher and a group of his friends are think, are planning a sort of a motorcade that will go around some of the neighborhoods. So we will help promote that, keeping that very local. So just local kind of neighborhood Facebook pages, things like that. We will not promote that publicly. And, um, we are planning on opening the welcome center, but with an eye towards what will we do if we get overrun? So we may have, we may post very limited hours for the welcome center and if things are okay, we'll leave it run. If it gets a little bit too much, um, we may opt to close it down if the staff doesn't feel comfortable. We're going to use that weekend to really assess how much organic business is coming to Breckenridge, um, from within Colorado. And that will help inform, um, how much marketing we do, how fast. Um, to add a little bit more to, um, Oktoberfest, uh, we met with Dick and a few other restaurateurs to just, um, run some ideas by them. And the concept that we're working with now is taking the brewmaster dinner concept and taking that into, um, restaurants more broadly. And that would essentially be Oktoberfest. We'd probably call it something different to not confuse people, but there seems to be some, um, support for that direction. So we're, um, going to flesh that out. Still a ton of work to do on that. We're going to help get Main Street open first and then get going on, um, Oktoberfest. Um, lodging, we just got the, um, DMX report through May 31st that came today. Um, we picked up, uh, a little over, or almost 700 room nights in May for the rest of the summer season to date. We're running about 58% behind, um, where we were last year, um, not inconsistent with 50% occupancy. We do have a few bright spots. Um, October's occupancy is the only month that's up. Every month is down, um, but October's up 24% and our ADR for the summer is $183 versus 174 last year. So I like any good news, so wanted to be sure and share that. Um, we got some just anecdotal reports from Beaver Run in the lodge that they had much better occupancies than they expected last weekend. Um, the lodge was actually scrambling for staff. They were running at 60%. So without any town marketing, um, you know, that, that was pretty positive. Um, we're still planning on launching our marketing, uh, the third week of June. Um, again, we'll start very slowly and then after the fourth, reassess how much we dial it up after that. Um, other destinations have started their marketing, but again, they're not as close to the front range as we are. So we're being a little more conservative than some of our competitive set. And we, we are looking at the data virtually every day and we're still confident that that's the right decision for, for Breckenridge. Um, looking farther out, when you look later in the summer, um, you know, June is still down a lot. Um, each month gets better. August starts looking better. When we look at Jack Rabbit, which is our lodging referral program, um, we're seeing some nice increases week over week in terms of not people looking and referrals going out to the properties. And our referrals last week, I think we were, I lost my number here, I think we were up 70 something percent over the prior year. So that's just getting the lodging inquiry to the property directly. Um, I still believe, we believe that Breckenridge is going to recover from this as well as any destination out there. And again, we just And again, we just appreciate the support and the cooperation we're getting from the community on every level. Questions?
Thank you, Lucy. Questions, gang?
Lucy, do you have a sense of how we, how we look compared to a comparable resort of Park City, Avail, Steamboat?
You mean in terms of lodging?
It's in terms of coming back.
I think we are in good, in good shape. I mean, I think with the, just the business, we're seeing the traffic on the street. You know, when it's a Thursday, the second week of June and Main Street's pretty full. And we've done nothing really in terms of marketing. I think that's pretty positive. And I do think as long as we can balance what is coming in from Colorado that will happen organically with what we're doing from our drive markets, we'll be okay. You know, what the, the big variable for us is if we're at 50% occupancy in the properties, you know, how do we help that balance, especially on weekends when we know we've got a lot of Colorado folks coming up? If for any reason, we didn't see the Colorado business that we think would be coming, we can lean on the Colorado Tourism Office to help market Breckenridge. They won't do it unless we ask them to. So that's always a trigger.
All right. Other questions? Very good. Lucy, thank you and thanks for all the hard work. Thanks for making Walkable Main Street a reality, too.
So thank you.
A lot of work, so thanks. All right. We move on to continued business now. We have second readings, starting with second reading Council Bill number 22, Series 2020. This is an ordinance repealing and re-adopting with changes Policy 33 Relative of Section 9-1-19, the Breckenridge Development Code Concerning Energy Conservation. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. This bill in front of you is a second reading and it will do some changes to our energy conservation policy to address some of the changes that we've recently done to our building code to adopt some international energy standards. So as a result of that, we needed to make some changes where positive points in our code were assigned for things that are now required. So we've taken, we've also gone in in a couple places and added opportunities for positive points, such as for where we have EV, you provide additional EV charging stations beyond what we've already require. In addition, there's been two changes for, since the first reading. The first one, we added some points for outdoor heated pools and outdoor heated hot tubs in terms of negative point assignments to basically assign one negative point per 500 square foot increment of those, to look at those as a bigger, they obviously use more energy. And yet the second thing we did was add in a provision, which you just received that earlier today, I believe in email format, which also recognizes that any energy, energy rating that earns an applicant positive points must exceed both the energy ratings in the IECC, which is the international code, but also our local sustainable, Summit Sustainable Building Code. If you do make a motion to pass this this evening, Jeffrey, probably want to reference that most recent version that was emailed out to the council earlier today. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Questions, anyone? No? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? You can use your Q and A button at the bottom and I will give you 30 seconds to respond. This is an important one because even though a lot of other stuff is going on in the country and the world right now, our sustainability program in town is still a really important thing that we're working towards. And we can't, we can't forget about that because, because of everything else that's going on, so.
Eric? The version of the ordinance that ought to be considered for adoption is marked at the top. It says, "As revised after packet was prepared."
Very good.
If Jeffrey's going to make the motion, please refer to the version that says, "As revised after packet was prepared."
Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move, on second reading, we pass Council Bill number 22, "As revised, as, after packet was repaired." As revised after packet was repaired.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Ms. Jello?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Gallagher?
Gary seems to have dropped off.
Yeah, I did see that he dropped off.
God, literally.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Okay, we are going to move to first readings. And we have no first reading, so we'll move to resolutions. The first is Resolution Number 15, Series 2020, A Resolution Making Supplemental and Reduced Appropriations to the 2020 Town Budget. Leslie, welcome.
Good evening and again, Mayor and Council. If approved, this resolution amends the 2020 budget with some supplemental appropriations, but largely reductions of the 2020 budget appropriations. These budget amendments adjust our budget for the 2020B COP debt payment for the parking structure planned in December of 2020 and reduces the budget by amounts previously presented to council as reductions in the capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions for staff? Now, anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution this evening? Please use the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen and I will give you 30 seconds. In the meantime, Helen, can Gary, is it too late for him to vote on that last one or?
That's a Tim question.
Yeah, my screen froze. I had to close everything down and come back on, so sorry.
Yeah, yes, it's too late, Gary. Sorry. Okay. Is Gary on dial-up?
No.
Well, you had to get on fiber, Gary. It's going to be really good.
Yeah, I'll never get out here for about 10 years, but okay.
Gary, it passed. If you're wondering, it passed.
It passed.
I was concerned that it wouldn't.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on this resolution and ask for a motion.
I move past Resolution Number 15, a resolution making up supplemental and reduce appropriations to the 2020 town budget.
Second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? No? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Jello?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. We have a Resolution Number 16, Series 2020. It's a resolution adopting the Summit County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Chief Baird?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, as you've already stated, this resolution will adopt the Summit County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation. And it's most this is a scheduled update that happens every five years. A month or two ago, the entirety of the 700-page document submitted to FEMA by the Summit County Emergency Manager. FEMA has accepted the document, ending adoption by all jurisdictions that are incorporated into the plan. This resolution accomplishes that for the town of Breckenridge. Staff, recommend that you do pass it.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief this evening? No? Anyone in the public wish to comment on the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update? I will start the clock at now. You have 30 seconds to reply to the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter and ask for a motion, please.
I move, we pass Resolution Number 16, a resolution adopting the Summit County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Coon?
What? Who?
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Jello? Ms. Jello?
You're muted, Erin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Our final resolution for the night is a new one. This is the Resolution Number 17, Series 2020, a resolution creating a temporary advisory commission known as the Town of Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission.
Mayor, Council, you have in front of you a resolution that if passed would allow the council to create this temporary advisory commission, which you have described on there. I think that, Eric, you've already gone to great length to explain why it's temporary. And so I'm not going to reiterate that. Other factors that are important, we have it listed in here, that this shall consist of not more than nine members, which would include any members of the council that are going to do that. It does give you some flexibility if you don't have nine right away, that the language just say not more than nine. So you could have fewer on there. And there's also terms of office. Four of the non-council members would serve three-year terms and the remaining non-council members would start off as two-year terms to make sure that the terms are staggered. And there's just some additional rules on here on how, you know, if a vacancy occurs, what would happen there, so.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions about this? Okay, I'm going to open this up to public comment. There's a Q and A function at the bottom of the screen. If you would like to comment, I'm going to start the clock. Right now, you have 30 seconds to ask us a question. While we're waiting for this, this is a I think this will be a great commission for the town to give us some guidance on some social equity questions that honestly, we just don't think about all the time. You get mired down in the day-to-day business of running the town and a lot of times we just don't think, we don't think it through. I know we have a very silent Hispanic community and we'd love to engage them better. We've tried on some occasions, it'd be great to have a member of that community on, on this commission as well as members of other communities. As Rick said, this is temporary, but that is only temporary in regards to our charter to allow us to reach out to the greater, the greater Upper Blue Basin to get members. Otherwise, if it was just a chartered commission, it could only be residents of the town. And that is very limiting in the way our, our town borders are. So we think this is, this will be a fantastic committee. I want to once again thank Dick and Rick and Shannon for getting this done so quickly. And of course, Tim, for writing this language so quickly today. We really just, really talked about getting this done this morning so we could have it for the night. And Tim, Tim did what he always does and got it done. So thanks, Tim.
Well.
All right, that is 30 seconds. There is no comment. So we will move to a motion.
I move, we pass Resolution Number 17, a temporary advisory committee to establish social equity for the town of Breckenridge. Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Even, Eric, just to clarify, even if it were a permanent committee, future councils could dismantle it.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah. I mean, really, the permanence is just in that, you know, councils feel it's important to do the work that this commission will do. I think it's important, you know, with Tim's guidance, we decided to do this by resolution. So the only way to abandon this commission would be by resolution also. So there would be public comment. People would be able to come, you know, come to council hopefully at that time and say, hey, we think this is a valuable commission for the town. So the word temporary in this is really, it's not as temporary as you would, as it seems. So thanks for asking that question, Erin. All right. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Ms. Jello?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Of course, yes. All right. So we will get rolling on this pretty much immediately. Rick and Shannon will develop what needs to be done. We'll probably send it out to the newspaper, Helen, so that we can start getting people to apply. For the council, anybody that you think you would like to submit names for or have them submit names? We'll, we'll just push it through and see how this goes. And we will talk about who will be on the council. And I think I'd like to get this really framed out by our next council meeting. So let's move as quick as possible so this commission can start doing its work. So thank you, everyone, for that.
Sorry, will we talk about those before we put an ad in the paper?
Can we?
What?
Will we, will we hash out those details before we put an ad in the paper?
What are the details you want to hash out? Because I need to know.
I'm just thinking typically our, our commissions and our committees meet during working hours, but this might be a good one that meets outside of typical working hours. And that might be important as people apply, whether they can, whether they have the availability or not.
Yeah, that's a good thought, Erin.
Great point.
I think a lot of times what we do with these two is we let them have the first meeting and they can sort of arrange, you know, whatever that part of the framework that the commission feels is most successful for them. So, you know, maybe we can put as part of the application process, please indicate what type of free time you have for, you know, whether it's going to be weekly to start or bi-weekly or monthly, you know, mornings, afternoons or evenings. I think that's a great point, so.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Include that.
Something in there about open the meeting outside normal workday hours. What other points would you like to see made in the application process? And in addition to that, so we could get this posted for maybe a two-week period or a 10-day period. And then we could gather those applications and try to set up interviews for the council.
Yeah, I, I would like to see it at least two weeks because I think it's going to take that much time to recruit. I'd also like it to go out in Spanish and English, the application, when we advertise it.
Give it that, Dick.
Just the, the announcement. How often are we thinking they'll be meeting, we'll be meeting? You know, there's a ton of work to do. It's going to start out more often than, than not. You know, I, like Rick said, I think that the group will get together and determine that. But it, it's going to be, it's going to be often. We're going to have to meet at least weekly or bi-weekly initially, I think.
Yeah. I would say weekly to start. That's almost every one of these that we do, Jeffrey. For everything we ever do, they always start out meeting a lot until they get, you know, until they get their pace. So, and Lucy just wrote in the chat that it would be, it will be important to message this through FERC. And I think that's a great idea. So if we can get this to Brianna Snow, that'd be awesome.
There is also a Spanish-speaking radio station that if we could run it as a PSA there, I know that that's a successful way to communicate. there, I know that that's a successful way to communicate.
All right, sounds great.
And will this be as like Zoom meetings at first, I think it'd be good to just identify that so that people aren't scared off by like joining a group of people they don't know, and.
Yes, I think we're still working on Zoom meetings for now, if something changes, you know, if we start meeting in July, I think we're going to probably guinea pig town meetings coming back to some kind of live deal, but we will definitely start this as a Zoom one to begin with.
Well, the reality is that this thing is going to be posted for two weeks, we're going to gather applications, you're not going to interview people until your first meeting in July, which could be an in-person meeting. You know, they'd be brought in obviously individually as part of that interview, so that, that could be in person. Which means your committee wouldn't get formed probably and really gear up until the second half of
July.
Of July, really, so.
There's a lot of groundwork that can happen in the meantime, though. I think.
Okay, anything else on that? We're going to move to planning matters, we have planning commission decisions of June third, there's one class A on the list. There any call up this evening?
Well, are we thinking of asking the developer to kind of rethink some of the percentage of free market or short-term rentals and district rentals, or the, the percentage of eighty, sixty percent, eighty percent AMI for two units, and then the others not eighty percent?
The only way this would work, Jeffrey, is if we'd have to call it up, so that means it would move to a de novo hearing at the next meeting. In the interim, the staff could talk to the applicant, if the applicant says no, they would either just go ahead and see what happens at council. You know, who knows if there's enough for a denial or not, so it's a, it's a bit of a crapshoot on the council's part. Obviously, the planning commission felt this application was good enough to pass and pass on, the staff felt it was good enough to pass and pass on, so it's really up to the council to decide whether to call it up and do it as a de novo or not.
Eric, for the record, let's be clear that it will take four votes by the council to call it up, it's majority of those present tonight.
Thank you, Tim.
Well, I would like to call it up.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to call up the Parkway Center mixed-use building at four twenty-nine North Park Avenue, P L, twenty nineteen dash zero two nine two, for the purposes of discussing the fourteen residential apartments totaling seventy-two hundred and thirty square feet. Roll call, Helen.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
I'll defer to my colleagues, yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, motion has been called up and set for de novo hearing on the twenty-third of June. And there we go, Mark, I think you heard enough in the earlier discussion to reach out to the developer and have a chat with him.
Yes, sir. Sorry, Eric.
Are we comfortable doing the de novo virtually?
Yes.
Hi.
There you go. Rick, the planning commission has been doing virtual hearings, and there's no reason the council can't do the same.
Thank you, Tim, thank you, council, while we have everybody on the line, we did have a resignation from planning commission, so we do have a seat open, there is an ad in the paper as we speak, these things are always a little harder to fill, planning commission is a planning commission is a tough commission to be on, it is a lot of work, so we need, we need some really motivated people to put their name in, and once staff gets those, we will find somebody to fill, fill the empty seat, so.
I want to make sure, I want to remind everybody about the process that we use on planning commission, so the staff will take the letters of interest that come in, staff will, along with two representatives from the planning commission and representatives from a comdev staff, they will hold the interviews, and then they will make a recommendation to the council at your next meeting, you need to act on it, you have thirty days to act on it, so you need to make an appointment at the next meeting.
Rick, when will, when does the term expire for the person who will fill the vacancy?
October.
When?
October of this year.
So it's a short, short-term appointment?
Yes, we have two other, two other appointments that will need to be made at that same time, so there, there was going to be three, this particular one that's being filled was term limited, but the other two seats could run for another term if they wanted to.
All righty, that's it for planning matters, I got a report of the town manager and staff, Rick?
Two additional comments quickly, I will be signing if, unless I hear differently from the council, the town manager order number four to take effect at eight A M. tomorrow morning, that basic, that order basically suspends the enforcement of the outdoor display of merchandise rule that we have in our town code, this allows us to display merchandise over the summer season, not only on Main Street, but we're also working with other retail businesses outside the closure area that may want to display additional merchandise, as long as it's on private property. So this public order will, just like we did with the sign code, will suspend that particular ordinance during this COVID period.
Any questions for Rick about this? Yeah, all right.
The second thing I just want to let you know is I will be just doing a little road trip starting Friday, I'll be kind of working and vacationing a little both next week. Holly and I are going to go to Arizona, but I will be available during that time, so it's just a little time to get away.
Definitely deserved time away, Rick and Shannon have been working virtually non-stop during this, this whole pandemic, it has been amazing how much time they've put into everything that's going on, so I want to, I want to personally thank them for everything they've done, and I'm going to call Rick all the time when he's on the road anyway, because he can't be away from us.
Do you, do you want some company, I got some time on my hands?
I echo, I echo Eric's comments, thanks, you guys.
Yeah, good, good work.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
And Shannon's going to take some time off when she heals, and she can do something.
Good. Really deserves it. Anything else, Rick?
No.
All right, report of the mayor and council members, I got to tell you, I have lost such track of days, I don't even know what meetings I've been involved in lately. I had, we had B T O at nine-thirty last Friday, I'm pretty sure most of you were in, Lucy's been doing a great job with those, they're really pretty awesome community meetings, great turnout on the Zoom for people. I did have on the fourth, a cast mayor's call, this is the second one we've done where it's just mayors from the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, and we've just been, you know, going over everything that we're doing during this time, we talk a lot about COVID, you know, Main Street closures were obviously not the only ones, interesting, Jim Schmidt in Crested Butte, they've decided to make Elk Avenue a one-way street, so they're going to allow some moving out onto the street on one half of the street, he's gotten a ton of pushback from some of the people in the community about it, they have a little different situation in that Elk is really the only commercial street in their district, so they're still doing it, though, they're pushing forward with that. Interesting, they had, the council got tested, six out of the seven council members had COVID at one time or another, yeah, so.
In Crested Butte?
Crested Butte, we were at a cast meeting right on March fifth, when we found the first case came to Summit County, I sat next to Jim the entire meeting and had lunch sitting next to him, and I guess I dodged the bullet there, so.
Wow.
He had it, he got the antibodies for it, so that was pretty interesting, Ketchum tested, Ketchum did a big testing, they tested a thousand people of five thousand signed up, they, they tested a thousand, they believe that twenty-five percent of their population in Ketchum, Idaho's had it. It was a really interesting meeting this time, because out of all the Colorado ski towns, Ketchum, Idaho was there, Moab, Utah was there, and Park City, Utah was there also, so we had a bunch of non-Corrado towns and one non-ski town, so it was really interesting getting all of their their, you know, stuff. They were part of the letter, remember when I talked to you about the letter I had sent in the goose about the PPP, we then had a second letter that Summit County mayor signed, and then I asked the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, who also signed the letter, and according to P T Wood, who's the mayor of Summit, their congressman told him that that letter was very helpful in getting the PPP, the current PPP extension, which is from eight weeks to twenty-four weeks, changes the percentage from seventy-five, twenty-five to sixty, forty, so never let it be said that local government can't affect change at a federal level, they really felt that the impact of the ski towns pushing that kind of stuff out was important. And the, oh, Jack from Whistler was on too, and they're really worried because air travel is so far down, and they're basically an air travel town, so they are hurting, so, you know, we talked a lot about police policy, where everybody was with with the Black Lives Matter movement and the protests, and, you know, we all come from very similar towns, we're all very homogeneous as far as race in a lot of our towns, so, you know, everybody's struggling with how to reach out, how to do this, and it was some, just some great conversation, so that's my update, Dennis, what do you have?
Breckenridge Heritage, I can say that, Breckenridge Heritage Alliance is now open for museum and tours, so that's good news, and I do have a question on our letter for our social equity, are we going to try to do that before our next meeting?
Yes, we'd like to get that done this week.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
Dick? What do you got?
You calling me, we had a housing meeting today. That was interesting, we, we got an update on housing helps, which is, is really you're really seeing a lot of success and a lot of applicants. I think the county's running short of money, and we discussed solutions to that. We talked about the buy downs, you know, we're going to start marketing those, the ones that we own haven't sold yet in earnest, and in end of June, early July. We got, talked a bit about Altaber Day, we talked a little about what's next, and, and planning and such, and Block eleven, we, we really suggested we wait till we're all in the same room and weigh in on Block eleven with the seven of us together in live. That's just that important, we felt. We did talk a little about the public works site and the rec center site, Gary, what'd I miss?
The only other, well, the thing that I think we also talked about, but a lot more work needs to be done. You know, we've always, you know, for the last year or so, we've always been talking about what percentage of our employees you know, live in Breckenridge, work and live in Breckenridge, or work and live in, in the Upper Blue, and so we're starting to see some numbers, but we're just not comfortable with some of the, the numbers and the percentages that we're seeing, because it does, some of them just don't make any sense, so Nicole and Lori are going to spend more time and really drill down to really get a sense of, you know, what that number is, because we, all of our goals for years, we've thrown out a, a number, and this, this is an opportunity to kind of say, is that number the right number, correct, or is it something, something different, and so we're starting to get some information to try to get our hands around that, but that's going to need some more analysis before we, before we sort of share any conclusions with the council.
Thank you, Gary. Dick, anything else?
No, we did rec events committee.
Very good, thank you, Erin?
We have a BOSAC meeting on June fifteenth, which the day has changed for schedules, but, so no, nothing to announce.
Very good, thank you, Jeffrey?
It's been a fairly quiet two weeks as the mayor pro tem, but I'm, I am available, and I, I think that people, that's a comfort to the community.
Absolutely, comfort in troubled times.
Yeah.
Kelly?
I just have a couple of things, I sit in on the red, white, and blue board meetings, and they said that they've definitely seen an uptick in, in work since the short-term rentals have opened back up, so they're keeping a close eye on, you know, what the capacity levels are, and they're reacting to those, they did a really nice job with a bike rodeo for kids around town, so if you know children who are interested in learning safe bike practices, and also elementary school kids who are learning to read, there are words up all over the neighborhood for, for that, that was really nice of them, I'm sure it was a ton of work, and, you know, with summer, the Wellington neighborhood kids are, of course, all over the streets again, and so there's a lot of discussion on cars and kids and how they don't mix. Rick has been very proactive and committed to some traffic studies to help look at, you know, how fast are cars going through the Wellington and Lincoln Park neighborhood, and basically, the way I see those numbers helping us is to have a realistic discussion as to if it's if there is, if there is something to be gained from changing the speed limit in Wellington neighborhood and Lincoln Park, I know that in the past, it's been discussed, and there hasn't been maybe the traffic analysis that shows, you know, whether a slower speed limit would benefit the neighborhood, and whether it would help, whether it even helped, really. But we're having the discussion again, and I think it's a great discussion to have, safety is, of course, a real concern that nobody here takes lightly, so we're going to put together a Zoom discussion with the local neighborhood and try to get to a place where parents are providing great oversight for their kids, but also there's maybe an added level of vehicle safety that we can consider. Right, Rick?
You put him on the spot. Wow.
No, no, I would never do that.
Wow. Does have a border commission I forgot about?
Okay. B C A, the arts, we've got a board meeting coming up on Monday the fifteenth, so nothing to report until after that board meeting.
Thank you, Gary. Other matters, anybody have anything tonight?
I got a couple.
Yep.
I was asked by somebody that on the via, the variable message board, it says masks suggested or masks, whatever, they thought maybe verbiage of mask required. If, I don't know how you guys feel about that, but you know, as you, to the north of town as you're coming, I think it said mask.
Is please wear your mask.
Yeah. Yeah, I wondered, he, I wondered, and he wondered, actually, if it'd be more forcefully worded, mask required. You know, so.
Problem is, it's not always required, it's required under certain conditions, so how much detail do you want to do, and quite honestly, within a couple of weeks, we're going to be changing, we're going to be going back to directing people to traffic, to parking. We're going to be going back to directing people to traffic, to parking at the large ones at the end of town. So.
Okay. And my other one is I sent you guys the, I think I forwarded you the email from the speakeasy. And I would ask maybe the staff and us to consider that. Remember she, she's been shut down because of this, the COVID and wondered about some sort of break on rent. I think I forwarded you guys the email.
You did. Rick and I, Rick and I discussed that and Rick suggested that since the rent is actually collected by BCA, we'd like, we'd like to hear what their recommendation might be before we weigh in.
Yeah, fair enough. Fair enough.
Okay. Other matters? Dick, do you have something?
Yeah, I had one. I had a, someone that lived up Moonstone reached out to me with concerns about the Red Pig Trail and how it intersects Moonstone. She had a rider pull right out in front of her. She said if it were a split second difference, she would have nailed him. Or he would have T-boned her.
I don't understand.
What's that?
How, how was the Red Pig Trail going into Moonstone? It.
Crosses.
I know, but it goes, it's like this. I don't know who ran into, that doesn't even make any sense because neither of them are downhill at that point.
Actually, it, well.
You know what I mean?
She felt like it was down. I went by and looked at it today. It, it's, it, that last pitch, you know, where it's flat up higher, you're a little bit screened from tra, you're totally screened from traffic. And then there's that last pitch. And she was very concerned. Maybe, maybe another signage above, but people fly down that road. And it's, it's, there's a lot of traffic. There's a couple of construction projects on there. There's a lot of traffic on that road.
Oh, you're talking about where Red Pig goes into High Point? Are you talking about?
Correct. Not Moonstone, High Point. I am saying High Point.
About where the, yeah, no, I, you know what? I don't disagree with that. There, we probably should put, you know, there's a yield sign there. It should probably be stop sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Eric. I misspoke. High Point is exactly right. She said, I mean, she just about nailed this guy.
Yeah, no, that, yeah, that I totally get. Could you take that to BOSAC?
Absolutely.
You know, and also, Erin, maybe, maybe a stop sign might, might be effective. But what is really effective is, is a chicane, something that, that kind of a, a speed, a speed limiter, you know, to slow down. I rode up it last night and it wasn't an issue about going too fast, believe me. But coming down, yeah, some sort of, some sort of speed, speed control might, might be necessary.
Okay, yeah, I'll bring it up.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Hey, I just want to thank everybody. I, I know this last handful of months have been tough. We've gotten, you know, everything from great emails to terrible emails and, you know, criticism on Facebook. I know it's been hard on everybody. We cannot take our foot off the gas at this point. Now is when I think it really gets difficult. You know, things start to reopen. We're going to need to make hard decisions going forward. I don't know what's going to happen this summer. People are so antsy. You know, everybody's just got to keep a thick skin and just do the work we've been doing. You know, I wish it was over, but it's not. And it's, it seems weird because, you know, the, the protests and the marches have really taken center stage lately. And I know I've taken a lot of our emotional, emotional time trying to figure out what we're going to do. The pandemic's still out there. It's still real. We're still going to get pushback from people with masks. We're inviting a bunch of people to town now. We're trying to figure out how to get everybody in town. Everybody wants to open 100%. And honestly, that stuff's just not happening quick enough. So we're in this for the long haul, guys. And, you know, you just gotta just stick with it. Everybody's been doing such a great job. You know, of course, Rick and Shannon have been amazing, but you guys have all done a tremendous job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
But thank you to everybody in the community that is tuned in this evening. Rick's got something else. Go ahead, buddy.
You know, I, I appreciate the accolades to Shannon and I, but I, I just have to remind you though, the staff is really working hard. And tomorrow, we're opening the rec center back up. Scott Reed has done a tremendous job of putting together a plan that we feel is good. Reservation system. I hope you guys try to use it to get in there and see how it's working. We're doing, day camps are, you know, operating again through the rec center, comm dev. And, you know, everybody across the board has really stepped up on this thing. And I, it's just important to, to say that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. If it keeps snowing, I'm going to have to go back to the rec center. So there you go.
Hey, while we're having this group hug, also I want to throw props out to the chief, Jim Baird and, and his cops. They've been, they've been dealing with these two, two peaceful marches and stuff. And, and we're at that skate thing a couple of nights ago and, and just really representing a community policing and, and good work. And I'm hoping to get deputized. I, I don't see it happening in the near future, but I'm lobbying.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Appreciate you as well.
All right. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.